Thanks everybody for coming to your city council. It's important to have people participate and thanks to the young ones for showing up. I hope you hang in there and learn some good stuff. Um, the very first thing we always do is we acknowledge the fact that before we were here, there were Native Americans, Indians here for a long time before. And uh, a lot of things happened and now we're here and they're still in our community and I hope that we can do work collaboratively to honor everyone's rights. Let's turn off our cell phones, please. And let's pledge allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the United States of America. To ensure the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. If you're following the agenda closely, I'm going to do a little twist up here. Ordinarily, what I would do right now is recess the city council meeting to uh convene the urban renewal meeting. But I'm going to let the folks who wish to speak to the city council from the public speak first rather than wading through the whole urban renewal meeting. So I have Joe Gunther and Joe Sheehan signed up to speak to council. If you guys could come on up and if you could keep it to about three minutes, push the push the red orb to make it turn green and we'll be on zoom. You see that Joe, that disc in front of you?
All right. Tell us, tell us what you'd like us to do.
All right. Uh, good evening. My name is Joe Gunther and this is Joe Sheehan. Um, I'm here. So I know some of you, uh, some of you had thank you for having us tonight. Uh, tonight I'm, we're here on the, on behalf of the Hood River Adult Softball League. Uh, last year was the first time I participated in the adult softball league and I simply had no clue about the culture that is adult softball. Uh, it was a, I had a blast playing, but what I did not recognize was the social atmosphere that the league creates. We have over 300 participants, but I can't say the number of people that just attend simply to watch the games and socialize. I myself would go down to the, go down to the field multiple nights a week just to watch and visit and socialize myself. Often in attendance are kids coming out to watch the glory of the league, which is amazing. And if you haven't gone, I'd highly recommend you go down there sometime. It's quite the experience. Plus the talent is next level. Uh, if I may say. Uh, I will say as much as we had kids and uh families be there, it was also really fun and it warms the heart to go to an, uh, my eight-year-old daughter's Little League games and see the kids emulate our behavior, usually to the positive, which is fun and good. And that's what we try to put together as a good, fun, positive league. Um, what I originally thought was just showing up to play some softball turned out to be something bigger. And if it's not a parent, I'm here to sell you guys on the league because last year it was ran by one person and we had essentially a contract that was for a thousand dollars to rent Collins Field. Uh, this year with some changes, we were quoted the going rate, which is roughly a hundred and twelve dollars a night. Uh, which we rent the field for roughly 60 nights. That comes out to sixty, sixty-seven hundred dollars or just shy of seven times the amount. We're really trying to keep the, the league affordable and inclusive as possible. And obviously cost is a major factor, a major contributor to that. So my first ask, our first ask for city council is if you guys would consider reducing the rate that you're currently charging uh, for the league in an attempt to make it more affordable and make it more inclusive. Uh, in addition, we're trying to find other facets because we have thought about reducing registration fees or finding ways that we can help supplement registration fees. Uh, one such idea included hanging banners in the outfield, which is pretty common. And it's my understanding that it would be against code if we let them, if we left them up during the duration of the season. So my other ask, cause we have been told we can put them up, take them out and put them up, take them down. That's four nights a week that we would essentially be having to do that. So my other ask is if we could just leave them up for the duration of the season. Uh, the banners themselves would of course, we would put together guidelines and standards uh with the help of Mikel and Rich Rice and the other folks at the city that would be acceptable for you guys. Um, but just a little bit more extra on the background of our league. Last year we, like I was telling you, it was ran by one person and we've since created a nonprofit. Um, for the, uh, of the league that doesn't only run the league, but it will also be an important driver in making the league and the field, Collins Field better. Uh, we've already, already started putting bigger picture plans together uh, in improving the facilities and the field. And last week's, we submitted our first proposal to remove the sod on the infield, making uh, being one of many changes we hope to complete to make the feel more attractive for other programs. So the final thing or the final, put it on a bow, the two things we're really asking tonight is for you guys to really consider reducing the overall cost of the, of the league. Um, and then also if we can hang our, our banners up, the sponsorship banners along on the outfield uh for the duration of the season. Um, I think that's everything I got. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Yeah, I don't have much more to say other than I, this league I've been involved since the beginning of it, uh sponsoring, uh, or sponsoring, but even getting games going before the league started and the field's a great resource in this community that I saw for a long time not being used. Uh, and then it started being used with some breweries around town and then the league was started. Um, and it's great. It's, it's a coming together of a community and such a way of different classes and different uh ethnicities and um different political personalities come together to play this sport together and have a good time. And it's not something you can see. We all get in our little bubbles nowadays. I think it's really cool that we have this community that's grown to 300 plus people and uh uses, uses a park, which is the main use, idea of a park, uses it from June through the middle of September, four nights a week. And that's a pretty awesome thing. Um, so like Joe said, uh, we'd love it if you could, um, think about the fee reduction and uh getting some banners up so we can establish ourselves as an uh and financially secure nonprofit uh and continue to do things for the field and the community for the next bunch of years.
Thanks, Joe. Thanks. What's the registration fee per player to?
So about six, typically it runs about sixty. Uh, typically, I mean, what you would see is typically we can get about 24 teams, 12 people per team. It ranges anywhere from 65 to 75 dollars a person. And we had, um, having said that, we really did when we were trying to figure out what the budget would look like. We're seeing freshness, not a knock on who had run it previously. We just didn't have any data. We didn't have any P and L to go by. And so we're really just trying to find any which way to keep registration low. But also Jolene Wampler and a bunch of other people that are part of the board now have really started. I don't know if you've seen what they've done with the Little League fields uh, uh, up off Belmont. It's, I mean, they're beautiful. They're amazing fields and we're starting that process, but it takes time and money. We already dumped about fifteen hundred dollars and to uh, uh, for the dirt uh up there and doing some other things. So there's process, but it's going to take time and money. And if we dump it all back to the city, we would love to put it back into the fields. Ultimately, what we'd like to do.
Thanks.
Thank you guys very much.
Okay, now I will recess city council meeting to hand it over to Chair Zandmiller of the Urban Renewal Agents. Right. So we're opening the agency meetings for
Can you guys talk into your mics, please? I, I can't hear you, Mark.
I didn't have it on.
I have problems with the on hot button. Thanks, bud. Uh, we have three people on Zoom, uh, uh Gladys, uh, Tim and, and Christie, you guys can hear me okay now?
Yes, thank you.
So the first thing we'll do is listen to the audio. Uh, there's a handful that will sign up and I'll call you up and we got a handful of letters. Uh, so uh, that's good too. And, and Brian is welcome to double dip on that. That, that's great. Um, we, we won't be doing a lot of discussion back and forth with, with those that do the communication, but everything will be listened to. Everything is important. Uh, this, this is awesome. So, uh, Megan, if you want to kick it off with your your posse here, it would be great.
Hello, Megan Ray. Is this on? Yes. Uh, Megan Ramey, 1886 Belmont Drive. I am the Saferest to School Manager for Hood River County School District and I am joined by uh four of the I don't know, between 15 and 20 um members of the eighties walk and roll club that I lead. It's a free after school club. So as part of my uh Safe Roots to School job, I focus on education. I um led many safety rodeos over the past uh year teaching 690 kids how to ride bikes from scratch, how to ride bikes better and how to ride bikes safely in our streets. 60 of those kids learned how to balance and pedal um in the past year, and that is like a joyous moment. So um to transition to my comments on the, on the street skate. If you look at this picture on the front page, uh, this was taken last week. Um, leading the bike train to school from, from Seaver Crop to May Street. And this is a daily occurrence, um where you have kids biking, you have people walking, stepping off into oncoming traffic to make way for kids biking. Um, there's parents riding e-bikes. There's people uh walking their dogs, seniors walking. And this is not, um, this is not a good good use of space when you have to share with a bunch of different modes. So my first uh comment is on um on the 12th street between Union and Pacific. So Dutch Brothers to the food truck mall. That planned as a shared use path is not functional and it will lead to friction between people walking, biking and on mobility devices, um especially next to cars going 25 to 30 miles per hour. And I would request um that we maintain a consistent design throughout the heights. So people don't get confused. So just maintain the two-way cycle track to Pacific. That's, that would be my request. Give the people walking and on mobility devices their own space. Give people biking or on faster e-bikes their own space. Um, second is the width of the cycle track between the intent, essentially the entire duration is planned, uh recommendation of eight feet. And if you turn to the very back of your packet, you'll see that the O dot um for blueprint for urban design says when bikes are a high priority, that two-way cycle tracks should be a, a minimum of 12 feet. And that is to encourage side-by-side riding between parent and child. So when my daughter was three years old, I would guide her through traffic by putting my hand on her back and with eight feet, this just wouldn't be possible for people to pass one another in a way that their handlebars wouldn't be rubbing. My third um point is on um A and Taylor Street. The way they are designed is um putting a contra-flow bike lane and a share-o right behind uh vehicles that are, you know, let's be honest, large in this town that are reversing into children that are probably this tall and they can't see them. So I would ask that the contra-flow bike lane and a dedicated bike lane be against the curbs next to the people walking. And the parked cars get bumped out a little bit. On A and Taylor, the other streets. Have, those are the, those are the neighborways that go across that get kids to school. Um, I had the honor of being in Portland with these, these ladies and a couple of gentlemen, uh fifth graders all day. They uh spoke with me at the Active Transportation Summit. And I'm going to let them, them comment, but I lead them all over town and try and teach them how to bike around town safely. Um, they get a lot of anxiety sometimes, which I have to talk them down from, but I'll let them tell the story and I appreciate you listening to our comments. So.
Genesis, sign up next. You want to talk, Chris?
Yes, your name and your address.
Um, wait, am I supposed to put mine?
Your name and your address.
Uh, so my name is Genesis Olivo and I live on nine 17 Pacific Avenue. Um, like right by Dutch Brothers, which is actually where Megan wants to do the thing.
Yes, where, where I talked about the two-way cycle track. And so, um, why don't you tell them how you feel about biking around town?
Um, I'd say it's kind of hard since cars are zooming by and if you're trying to be, if you're trying to listen to music, the, like the sidewalks are a little too short to like be walking and to be biking without like colliding pretty much.
Um, Ruby.
Hi, my name is Ruby. I live on Camia Drive, Second Street. It's pretty easy to get to um Dutch Brothers. The hard part is going to school, school with the bike train, espec- especially um since we have to go in a straight line and no one can be side by side with each other, which is kind of hard for some people and um, I think it would be a lot safer for this community.
So I'll just um, uh, expand a little bit. So Ruby's talking about, I make them ride single file on the 12th street sidewalk. Because if they bike next to each other and rub handlebars and one of them goes into oncoming traffic, it would be game over.
Uh, when I'm going downtown, I make the right turn there. Um, one of the problems with uh the this closing of this intersection is how do I get to Rosar's? How do I go south? Um, in the narrative regarding this entire plan. I see nothing mentioned about how people are supposed to get south. The only thing I see is one little line that says. Union Street traffic must go north to Wilson or A or Taylor or something like that to go back to the west on Belmont. I think people end up going south to Rosar's. That's the major shopping area. Um, if this were to go into effect, what would happen is in order for me to get downtown, I mean, down to to Rosar's, I would have to make a right turn. Under a one-way of twelve. And then I would have to make a left turn onto one of the four side streets. Then I would go to a stop sign. At that point, I'm faced with. New two-way traffic on fourteenth. And it's going to be an absolute nightmare trying to make a left turn onto a busy street. With all sorts of traffic going that way. Um, I kind of extrapolated here and made the assumption that, oh, well, you're supposed to use the new route. So therefore, I guess what I'm supposed to do is I'm supposed to go all the way down to the traffic light at the hospital, make a left turn. Go into the new roundabout, go around the roundabout, come back up the hill. Go all the way down to the new traffic light at Belmont. To go three blocks to Rosar's. I guess probably what I should be doing is riding my bike. But I think a lot of people, what what is not really being considered here from what I can see is all the residences. On the the east side of twelfth street. I hear a lot of talk, I see a lot of talk about traffic flow. You know, how do we keep the traffic going? How much traffic's going here and here? I don't see anything mentioned about the people that actually live there. And though, we're the ones that are gonna have to fight this entire new thing. And I'm concerned that what we're creating here in order to solve one problem, there is a problem with thirteenth in Belmont. There's definitely a problem with twelfth and Union. But to move the problem onto other things, you create other problems down the road. Everything needs to be looked at as one whole. And uh, I think things need to go kind of back to the drawing board and really look. At what happens to the people and how they get south. That's it. Thanks a lot.
Thank you, Brian.
Claudia Monfondo, one six seven five, Country of the Road. Uh, I realize my plan is not in our agenda tonight, but that's the topic of my testimony. Thank you for serving on this floor, Gladys and Tim. Chrissy and Heather, uh, I greatly respect your time and the work of staff and consultants. I handed you this letter signed by me and five other local developers, some more active currently than others. And the points I'm making tonight are on behalf of all of us, but of course we should reach the others for their specific opinions. We know all of them. Um, we are not trying to delay adoption by September of a new urban renewal area. In fact, I think it is the greatest tool that the city has on hand. To facilitate much-needed development and associated infrastructure. The proposed West Side project list from the April tenth meeting is great. But I think it's missing at least three specific motor vehicle projects that are already adopted in your transportation system plan. If you look on at the map again on page two of this letter, you see three dash black lines. Um, those are the projects we are proposing. You add to the urban renewal list now. Um, one of them is an extension of Sherman Avenue, so from thirtieth westward. Which would facilitate new development at and around the existing school district property. Who knows what's gonna happen there? And an already proposed private property tax-paying, non-subsidized workforce housing project. To the tune of about one hundred and seventy-five rental units. The other long east-west dash road represents an extension of wine country from Mount Adams Avenue over to Rand Road. Um, that would also facilitate private development and would immediately pay down. Your urban renewal debt, which I understand you are going to start in January. Um, also importantly, it would provide a convenient detour route for when Cascade is heavily under construction with new intersections widening of the road. Et cetera. There's lots of work planned on Cascade. Um, that short north-south connector that kind of swerves is just the connection between future Sherman and future wine country along Henderson Creek. I believe you already have a. Trail proposed there, but you also need a roadway. So we're proposing you add all or some of these roadways to your project list, your existing draft project list that Abigail presented last two weeks ago. And increase the maximum indebtedness by ten point eight million to thirty million. Those are figures from the T S P. By doing this, you are not necessarily obliging the city to build these roads right now. You are just setting up your successors for future flexibility. To build these things when they are going to create the most valuable public input. Um, additionally, various private landowners are willing to donate the land required to facilitate these roadways. In conclusion, number one, public infrastructure in the form of neighborhood roadways, not just state highways. Is going to facilitate private development if you do it with your UR dollars right now. Number two, private development will pay very healthy property taxes toward the UR debt that you will start to incur in January. And number three, an eastward extension of wine country will provide a very valuable detour away from Cascade Avenue construction. So we have this amazing mechanism, this urban renewal mechanism that we've been talking about since two thousand sixteen, perhaps earlier for this particular part of town. And I think that to facilitate growth. On the west side for decades to come, we really need to look at this draft project list now and revisit the T S P, revisit the West Side plan. Um, I think that if you're not, I don't think, I know that if you're not more bullish on this, straightforwardly, I'll tell you right now. At least one very reputable multifamily developer with immediate intentions to build workforce housing up to two hundred units. Somewhere around one seventy-five will not consider Hood River. And this is imminent, right? So I would. Ask you to please take us seriously, I guess. Please, if you have time over the next couple of months before you adopt this plan, meet with us. There's a list of names. You know all of them except for Mr. Cody. I'll introduce you. Whatever, you already know them. You can get the contact through Dustin. Um, and please just consider this very specific request that I've laid out in this letter. Thanks.
Yeah, uh, anyone else want to speak to Urban Renewal Agency? Linda, you're good. Um, were there any uh agenda additions, corrections? Okay, uh, the next uh thing is consent agenda. We have uh a construction uh. Contract for a second in Oak. And uh, the minutes. Then you want to pull one of those off or here we go?
Yes, Chairman, I'm going to approve the consent agenda.
A second.
Alright, uh, a motion by Paul, a second by Megan to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion from Zoom land? I see one, no. Uh, Christine?
I'm good.
Okay, uh, we'll take a vote. All on the approving consensus agenda say yes. And um, Chair votes aye, so um, that's good, that passes, that's nice. Uh, regular business items, there's one sizable thing on you. Um, Abigail and Dustin, do you wanna kick this off?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, one item that we have for you tonight, um, we. Online, we have Nathan Plansky from M I G. I believe we also have with us John Baskett from D K S and Associates. Um, who are a part of your Heights Project Team. Uh, tonight, we're gonna discuss um some of the design refinements uh for phase three. And I'm not gonna take too much time because Nathan has a, we have about an hour of presentation to to take you through. Uh, to cover some pretty important points. We're looking for the agency board to give us uh direction. On on some key design features so that we can continue with final design refinement that will come back to you in the future. So. Without further ado, um, we're, we'll get right into it. Uh, there'll be a couple pause points. We'll, we'll be looking for some discussion from you. Uh, to keep this thing moving along. Um, and with that, I I have Nathan Plansky queued up here.
Great, thank you, Dustin. Great to be back and um be talking about the Heights with you guys. It's been a few months. I'm gonna share my screen and as Dustin mentioned, I've got a lot to get through tonight. Okay, so everyone hopefully see the screen. Okay, so for tonight's agenda, I'm like to kind of do a quick reminder and sort of where we are in uh the project design process. Um, and I'll more, almost more so sort of where we're headed over the next few months. Uh, but then the kind of the meat of the agenda is going through and discussing the findings and the recommendations from the project team and also. Uh, from the Urban Renewal Advisory Committee, who we met with on Thursday, from the additional design studies that the agency board. Um, requested as a part of the phase three contract. So we're gonna be talking about the design for the key intersections at thirteenth and May and thirteenth and. Um, Belmont and twelfth. East-West street design, um, between Belmont and May, which we haven't talked about in much detail. Um, yet through this process, um, some refinements to the twelfth and thirteenth street. Um, cross-section designs and then a bicycle connection to Pacific Avenue to the south of our product study area that you've heard. Some folks talk about this evening. Um, we'll also give a quick recap on. Where we are um with on-street parking impacts based on project team recommendations. So we've got a lot to get through. Um, what we're gonna do is sort of pause through each of one of these. Um, studies to kind of get feedback and kind of from the board at that time. In terms of where we are in the process, you know, phase one, we've been going for, you know, a year and a half or so. Phase one was really kind of. Public outreach, kind of data gathering, establishing those project goals. Phase two, last year, we developed the preliminary design alternatives and got the direction to move forward with the hybrid design. Um, and so we are now developing that preferred concept plan and implementation plan that will go with it that will provide that roadmap. For the Urban Renewal Agency, um, for future implementation. As a part of this phase three process, there's gonna be three check-ins with the Urban Renewal Advisory Committee and the board. And so this first. Meeting, this meeting tonight is our first check-in and we're gonna be talking about the design studies. We'll be coming back in a couple of months to talk about the final concept and present that. And begin discussing considerations for an implementation plan. And then a third check-in. Um, we'll discuss the draft implementation plan before coming back a fourth and final time to the agency board. To present the final concept and action plan. So with that, I'm gonna jump into sort of the first big topic and um really the the biggest topic, I think, of the um. Kind of what we've been looking at is the kind of design of key intersections. So we'll talk through thirteenth and May Street first. We'll pause and kind of allow. Kind of opportunity for discussion and feedback from the board and then we'll kind of move on to thirteenth and Belmont. So when we last met, uh, we presented um preliminary design alternatives and the hybrid design. Um, there was an interest in the roundabout, but there was a desire to have some more information. And so. As a part of the studies that we've been working on for the last several months, we've gone back and looked at the kind of traffic modeling. That was completed with the original roundabout design. Um, we've identified a comparable signalized intersection concept to compare. In terms of operational impacts, property impacts and cost. Um, to kind of help the the board make a recommendation for moving forward at this intersection. If you remember, the roundabout layout that had been presented uh most recently, um, had been developed by a a third-party kind of roundabout expert. And so that layout that had been refined from preliminary design alternatives was kind of shown this small image in the left. And what the project team has been working on is right sizing that both for context and footprint, um, for thirteenth and May Street. One of the things that hadn't been incorporated in that in in original roundabout layout or the bicycle facilities that are proposed on May Street. And with the direction for the preferred design, that includes a two-way cycle track on May Street, east and west. And so that's shown here as this kind of green line on the lower side of the roundabout. We also worked with D K S, the traffic engineer, to kind of review the footprint and kind of circulation within the roundabout and. Based on the hybrid design concept and having a two-way street on thirteenth, there was a ability to kind of remove one of the circulating lanes. In this roundabout to make it a little bit smaller. Um, then we also, north of May Street on thirteenth, the T S P has bike lanes. Um, it's designated as a a future bike route. And so incorporating those elements into the a roundabout layout. And so this graphic here on the right. Is that sort of most current layout for a conceptual roundabout plan for thirteenth and May. One of the other things we were tasked with was developing a signalized intersection to compare to the roundabout to understand what are the impacts to property? You know, there was conversation that the roundabout was gonna have a lot of impact to properties. So what is the impact of adjacent properties for a roundabout? What are the operational differences uh for moving people driving, biking and walking to these intersection, this intersection? And then thinking about implementation, what's the cost difference? And so thinking, what I'd like to talk first about is the operational impacts for moving vehicles through the intersection. And I'm gonna kind of present some technical terms. So this table on the left looks at the intersection operations or the delay associated with improvements at thirteenth and May. This first column with the abbreviation LOS, so LOS is level of service. And so this is a. Measurement for how well traffic flows along the street expressed in letters from A to F. So. A is a high level of service and ultimately is kind of a free-flow traffic condition, which is great for people driving. But not necessarily good for people walking or biking. Level of service F is the worst condition and that's typically defined as. Stop-and-go traffic with poor travel times for people driving. Within this table, there are four different conditions that we reviewed, the T S P build scenario. Which was identified as having a level of service C with thirty-one seconds delay. And then a V over C ratio of zero point nine six. And so this V over C is the second sort of technical term that I wanted to help define. So this is the volume-to-capacity ratio, um, which is a measure of the roadway congestion. Um, and so that's the number of vehicles that could pass along or through a roadway. Divided by the peak hour capacity. So this is an O dot standard. Um, that requires a V to C ratio less than one point zero. And so here you can see. The V to C is zero point nine six. The one other thing I wanted to mention is the city's level of service. For an intersection is level of service E. Um, so that's the T S P build scenario. Adding a a signal for the kind of hybrid design concept with the two-way traffic on thirteenth. Um, putting a signal in without a cycle track results in a level of service D. Uh, forty-four second delay and a point nine four V to C ratio. So fairly similar to a T S P. It meets both the city's and ODAS requirements from a um moving vehicles. When you then integrate a two-way cycle track with a traffic signal, that. Analysis starts to drop in terms of low-level service, the delay that people would experience during the peak hour as well as the V to C ratio. And the reason there's a change in level um performance here is that to move people safely biking through the intersection. Requires a dedicated separate phase so that people biking through the intersection can move through separately from cars to avoid. Um, turning vehicles crossing the of the bike lane. And so here you have level of service E, which is not great, but it's still within the city's standards. Um, a much higher delay in terms of seconds at the intersection and then a V to C ratio that slightly exceeds ODAS standard. And the bottom column shows a roundabout. And again, this is the kind of best operationally. In terms of these four different scenarios with level of service C, eighteen-second delay and a zero point eight six V to C ratio. One slight nuance about this analysis is that the roundabout. Um, modeling does not account for um any pedestrian push buttons that might be activated by people biking through the corridor. So when people are biking. Along May Street in the east-to-west direction and they get to that intersection, the idea is to provide a. A traffic signal um light so that they can push the button, flash and help people get across the street safely to where's raise the awareness for people driving. And so this modeling doesn't account for that because that's sort of an on-demand needed um element. The other thing that we looked at is vehicle queue lengths. And so this is. How long cars are backing up during the PM peak hour. And so this is measured from the stop line at the intersection to the end of the last vehicle. These are ninety-fifth percentile queue lengths um for the weekday PM peak traffic in twenty thirty-nine. And so. This is something that would only be experienced five percent of the time during that future date in the summer peak hours. And so looking at a signal without a cycle track, you've got manageable queue lengths kind of to State Street and the. to State Street in the southbound direction and A Street in the northbound direction. Again, when you add that cycle track, you change the single timing so that bikes can get, people biking can get across safely. Queues can back up to Oak Street and beyond in the southbound direction and beyond Belmont. And so all of a sudden, you have the intersection control at 13th and May impacting the up and downstream intersections performance. Whereas a roundabout only would have a 100 to 200-foot queue length. So very big difference in terms of how people are backing up during those performance periods. From a property impact standpoint, in blue and the graphics on the right are the potential property impacts for each of these intersection controls. I want to kind of preface that these are for illustration only. You know, we're at preliminary design, so they don't reflect exact locations, which would be identified as part of a future intersection design. But kind of just quickly, we can talk through beginning in the top left with the northwest corner of the intersection, the Behavior Health Building. A roundabout's able to sort of shift the center of that intersection to avoid that property. You know, there's the existing retaining wall and structural sidewalk along May. So we're trying to lay this out to avoid that. With the traffic signal, there's not as much ability to shift everything because that shift can impact parcels on the other side. So there is a small impact anticipated, but not to the structure or to the access, the buildings on that property. On the northeast corner of the intersection, the main hospital campus, there's a surface parking lot. You can see both these intersection layouts would have impacts to that existing parking lot. But we anticipate that the existing circulation from May Street that kind of loops in and through that parking area could continue to operate, but there would be some impact to the existing parking on that site. On the southeast corner, this is where you see the kind of most impact in terms of square footage of property. And so for the roundabout, the size of the roundabout and provide that two-way bike facility on the south side ends up impacting three full parcels along that south side. And then also would require the fourth parcel that's just to the right to have their access modified. There's a driveway that exists right between these two houses that could be maintained, but would need to be modified. And there's also a small portion of a parcel to the south of the corner lot. For the traffic signal, while the physical built improvements might not directly impact this house on the southeast corner, there is an existing driveway and access that would be removed as a part of the intersection improvements. And so for that, for those reasons, the assumption is that this property would need to be acquired to implement a traffic signal. And then at the southwest corner of the intersection is Jackson Park. And so there's slightly more impact with the roundabout in terms of square footage. However, the traffic signal might potentially have a little more impact to the existing parking area based on the layout of the channelization leading to the intersection. So sort of similar, but different impacts to the Jackson Park. So kind of thinking about the property operational and cost considerations for these two options. You know, the traffic impacts are significantly worse for a traffic signal, particularly with those long vehicle queues for southbound traffic. So that really overrides some of the property and cost impacts that we're seeing for the roundabout. We have gone through and done a sort of refined planning level construction cost estimate. And do you think that the construction cost for a signal could be, or for a roundabout could be 130 or 140% more than this traffic signal plus additional costs for right-of-way acquisition? But recognizing the concerns with southbound uphill traffic in the winter and those long queues, I feel that roundabout is the preferred solution here. The one other thing I want to point out is along the south side of the intersection, there is a much longer path of travel for people walking and biking through the intersection. There is, however, with the property acquisition on the southeast corner, an opportunity, you know, with the acquisition of those properties, there's a substantial part of that area that could potentially be integrated into a place-making opportunity. So is there creating some gathering space or kind of a small passive kind of park-type setting at the intersection that could potentially function, you know, as a gateway in addition to any landscaping within the roundabout? And so the project team, the recommendation is for a roundabout at 13th and May, and this was supported by the Urban Renewal Advisory Committee. So with that, I'm going to stop right there and turn it over to the board for comments.
Yeah, I just had a quick question on your math. You have, the construction cost could be 130, 140% more in this signal interchange in the other information. You have costs for the signal between 3 and 5 million and costs for a roundabout between 4 and 6.5. Are those numbers correct?
Yeah, and those we're looking at sort of surface level improvements, but we haven't started to identify or, you know, what is the underground utility infrastructure and the additional costs that might be needed for relocating or modifying those? So that's sort of strictly surface level.
Yeah, just to be clear. So the cost of roundabout is 30 to 40% more than the signal interchange, not 130, 120% more. It's not more than double?
Sure, yeah, correct.
Yep, thanks. Just wanted to clarify that.
Wouldn't you?
Sorry about that. That's what you get for looking to.
Thank you. A couple of questions about the push button sort of concept. I know that's, you sort of spoke to somebody that's got expertise on roundabouts, et cetera. I'm just wondering, are there other roundabouts of a similar character that have employed that? I just get worried that people might blow through it or not be aware of it, there'd be larger signs, that kind of stuff. I think it's, I'm sure there's not a scenario where you can actually, you know, have some cross through there and it lights something up as easily. And you know, we see the concept on, you know, crossing over near Rose Hours, where somebody does have to push the button, lights go on. So I get the idea. I just wonder how do we make sure cyclists do that? Because that'll be a big safety concern. Not sure if you have any thoughts on that.
Yeah, so one of the common kind of person-activated push buttons is called a rectangular rapid flashing beacon. And it is not uncommon for these to be used at crosswalks for roundabouts to raise the awareness and visibility for people crossing the street that are walking or biking. John Boskett, I don't know if you have anything you want to add to that?
Yeah, I guess I would just add that I think with any significant traffic control change like this would be, I think education outreach should be an important component of ruling this out, which hopefully will will help a lot of people understand how to use this properly and how to use the crossing. But as Nathan said, I think the the proposed or probably the preferred treatment would be to include those flashing beacons there and hopefully, you know, people will use those to help get across. And I mean, there always can be some compliance issues, but you know, usually I think the best approach is some enforcement, but definitely education and outreach to get people to understand how to use them appropriately.
Yeah, I understand. I'm just trying to think of the perspective of like a, you know, 11-year-old kid using that. Are they going to know what they're doing, that kind of thing, versus an adult, which is probably someone that would be educated, et cetera? So I think that there should be something that's thought of for that. I'm also wondering, is there a an elevation gain understanding from, you mentioned it's going to be a longer path of travel for cyclists, et cetera? I'm just trying to think about, you know, again, a kid riding this way, is that going to be a significant elevation change for them? Difficult for them to get up that amount of hill? I mean, I know that hill, but can't really conceptualize based on the map, you know, how steep the hill's going to be for a kid getting on it?
No, that's a great question and a great observation. You know, the intersection, and I think that's part of the cost and in either of these scenarios is the intersection today is fairly steep. And this intersection for the roundabouts is much longer, so it would be regraded. You'd probably have a sort of maximum 5% grade kind of moving from the north, the southbound direction.
Okay, thank you.
Less steep than it is today.
Perfect.
Thanks, Nick. Megan, do you have anything at this stage? Go ahead.
Grant? Just a quick question. The distance in between the pedestrian crossings and the vehicle yield markings, is that roughly a vehicle length?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll go up to Zoom. Kristi, do you have any questions about this particular piece?
No, just a clarification. Going back to, I believe it was Grant that said that it's a 30% to 40% increase over a signal, but that 30 to 40% does not take into consideration property acquisition, correct?
Correct. That's correct.
Thank you.
Gladys?
No further questions from me. Thank you.
Yeah.
Nothing for me, Mark. Thank you.
I just had one question, Nathan, which is the third, the easternmost property acquisition property is, we're just nicking the corner off of it. Did you look at stealing 10 more feet from the north side and avoiding and having to get just two instead of three properties acquired?
The, you know, I think the frontage along the hospital campus building, they've got some operational things kind of right under this May Street. And so it kind of generally felt that there would be, I don't know, this is fair to say, less impact because I know there's different people and circumstances involved. But we didn't look at shifting that, but I think that the challenge is, is how do you shift that without impacting other things? Recognizing you have to taper things over a distance.
Gotcha.
I have a question actually right now, Mark, that you just asked that. That May Street entrance at the hospital is, that'll be completely filled, right? So they're not going to be able to go in and out, or will that remain open?
No, the assumption is that would remain open. And whether it's a ride-in, ride-out only is probably more likely because of how close it is to the intersection there.
Thank you.
But the idea is to kind of keep that open, recognizing that's the access for the parking lot.
Perfect, thank you.
I did have one other question now that I'm zooming in on this.
Go ahead.
The current elevation, I know that, you know, as you're coming up the hill, that's kind of the highest part or the, okay, never mind. I just answered my own question. When I was looking at the map, it was backwards. And so the south is the lesser elevation grade for the bike, for bike and pedestrians. They're not going to have the higher elevation grade of coming up from Cascade or Oak or whatever, whatever the name of the street is right there. I answered my own question. Thank you.
But there are planned bike lanes along 13th and the city's TSP or a bike facility on 13th between, I think it goes all the way to Cascade, but between Cascade and May. And that's a climb.
Nice. I think, I think we're ready to roll.
Okay, all right. So kind of jumping down to the south end of our project study area, again, we're looking at a very large footprint with a double roundabout to manage these multiple intersections of the south end. And one of the things that we're asked to look at is, you know, what is an alternative that has less impact to properties and businesses and access for a traffic signal? And so for the double roundabout, the graphic here on the left is the layout that was presented at the April open house last year. So just about a year ago, actually. The one on the right was another configuration that Dustin had contracted with a roundabout specialist to kind of give them some different parameters that didn't impact a couple of parcels to the south that are being impacted to kind of say, what would that configuration look like for a roundabout? And I think depending the different constraints that you put on there, you can come up with different variations of what a double roundabout could be. But one of the things that we wanted to do as a part of this is now that a hybrid design concept had been identified as, what does one of those scenarios look like, double roundabout footprints with the planned bike connections, both south to Pacific Avenue, and then how people east-west on Belmont would move through here? And so in blue, we've identified sort of shared use paths or kind of shared spaces for people walking and biking along the north and south sides of the double roundabout to help people move east-west through this area. And then also that shared use space on the east side that could continue south to Pacific Avenue. One of the reasons for using kind of shared spaces is it provides a slightly smaller footprint than having to provide dedicated spaces with the separation in between. We also wanted to look at what is the impact on street parking at 13th, recognizing that there's a little bit more kind of you have to redirect traffic to kind of come through this double roundabout. So you do have some impact to parking on the west side of 13th in front of the coffee shop and the other businesses there. And then, you know, what are the opportunities? Again, that kind of place-making term that I said, you know, when you look at the areas that are used and that are not used within the public right of way, there is an opportunity potentially along the north side, at the north, the west corner of 12th and Union there to potentially have a community space. So what would a traffic signal look like? And so one of the things that we worked with DKS at is how can we develop a signalized intersection to provide a comparable alternative that manages that congestion coming down 13th? Really takes a look at the vehicle queues and the backups through the intersection, trying to minimize the footprint and a widening of the roadway that would be needed and maintaining to the extent that we can kind of access to businesses and properties. And then understanding what are the property and cost impacts for those? And so we looked, explored four different intersection configurations to manage these multiple intersections. And so from left to right, and these were sort of, we felt were the options that, you know, had some legs to sort of move forward as an initial study to kind of be paired with the hybrid design concept of one-way traffic on 12th and two-way traffic on 13th. And so from left to right, option one, we looked at what if you limited Belmont to just eastbound traffic? And how would the circulation work there? And what are the traffic modeling impacts? Option two, what if you took Belmont out of the equation and routed people a little bit further south to route back up? And this is actually something that was, came up at a meeting with ODOT staff when we were reviewing the preliminary design alternatives last year, something to think about. Option three was widening 13th and having an extra lane of traffic, which would have more impact to parking in the southbound direction. And then option four, having Belmont be westbound only. And so we ran each of these four scenarios through the traffic model, looking at kind of the operational impacts for these different configurations. And looking at the level of service, all of these performed better than the city's level of E level of service standard. The delay was fairly similar. None of them were too high, but there is a range from a 17-second delay for closing Belmont to a 39-second delay for one-way westbound traffic. And then all of these met the city or the ODOT's V-to-C ratio, and they were less than 1.0. We also looked at queue lengths. And so where and how far are people backing up, moving north and south on 13th Street? Option three, that added the additional lane of traffic to 13th, performed the best. So it had the shortest vehicle queues in the southbound direction, only 400 feet, and in the northbound direction, 650 feet. However, the project team didn't feel that taking on-street parking away from that west side of the street was an acceptable solution. And so we looked to the other options. And from these, option number two, which closed Belmont, seemed to have the best balance of intersection operations for a traffic signal. And so in the southbound direction, that vehicle queue length is about 1,100 feet. Taylor is 1,000 feet away and May Street is 14 feet away. So it backs up all the way to Taylor, but it doesn't back up north of Taylor and impact operations at 13th and May in the southbound direction. For northbound traffic, it's about a 450-foot backup, which extends Nick's Drive is 600 feet away, so not all the way to Nick's Drive. So option two was what the project team moved forward with to develop a layout, and that's what's shown here on the right. We then took that option two traffic signal layout to compare it to the double roundabout. And again, similar to what we did at 13th and May is let's go through and look at the operational impacts, the property impacts and the cost impacts, to identify if, what would be the most appropriate for the heights context. And so from an intersection operational standpoint, the traffic signal, as we showed in the previous table, had a level of service B, a fairly small 17-second delay and a V-to-C ratio, 0.83. The double roundabout, which is broken up here into two separate rows, both have high level of service, very low delay, and very easily meet that ODOT standard. And so these service, very low delay, and very easily meet that ODOT standard. And so these, the kind of roundabout is really sized to provide a lot of capacity. And there's not really a way to, sort of an all or none situation. Vehicle queue lengths, again, we just talked about, you know, backing up to Taylor and slightly beyond 4%, 5% of the time in a summer peak 2039 condition. And backing up, you know, not quite to next drive, but 450 feet to the south of the intersection. The roundabout similar to 13th and May have just very short queue lengths, so 100 and 200 feet respectively between those two. Looking at potential property impacts, and I know we talked a lot about this when we met late last year, and one of the reasons that we're talking about the traffic signal here, but with the double roundabout and, you know, the layout can vary, but I think no matter how you shift these around, you're going to have a lot of impact to properties. And so there are five full parcels being impacted in this figure on the left. Three of those has businesses. And there are also kind of two portions of parcels that are impacted, whereas a traffic signal, you know, primarily impacts this center parcel. One of the other things that we talked about with the Urban and Rural Advisory Committee is there are impacts to those businesses north of Belmont between 12th and 13th. It's hard to see here, but there was an assumption that there'd be sort of a driveway access. And so while Belmont might be closed, cars that are accessing businesses or the alley could continue to move through there. And so when you think about this as a place making opportunity, you know, sort of paved plaza space, but not something with built infrastructure that's going to impede people moving through here to kind of access businesses and access alley. And again, these are, you know, illustration only and kind of final actual impacts of properties that happen during a future intersection design. So kind of think, looking at operational impacts and property impacts, you know, the impact with the double roundabout on adjacent properties just feels really steep. And so while there are long backups on 13th, they don't impact adjacent intersections. And so it felt that a traffic signal for this intersection is the project team's recommendation from a cost to implement, you know, a double roundabout could cost, you know, potentially twice as much or somewhere in that area for the surface level improvements. And that doesn't account for any right-of-way acquisition that would be needed. The Urban and Rural Advisory Committee agreed with the project team's recommendation. So with that, I'll turn it back over to the board.
Great. Well, let's do the questions again. Let's do it opposite order. So Tim, Tim, do you have anything?
Nothing for me, Mark.
Gladys?
No, Nathan answered my question about the drive-through with, in the place making area. So no further questions for me, thank you.
Great. Christie?
Well, since it was brought up by some of the public comment, has there been a analysis of, you know, if you're coming, if you're coming from the, from, yes, over there, thank you. And then you have to make a right in order to then make a left to go back up to Rose Hours. What's that timing look like?
There hasn't been any analysis done for that. You know, it's three blocks. It would be, I'd kind of the resident kind of mentioned that the challenge of turning left from, what are we looking, A Street, A and Wilson here on the 13th? One of the goals that we're trying to do, and we'll talk a little bit about it more about it later, is sort of the traffic calming proposed to sort of improve turning movements. But there's been no analysis done.
Okay. And then the place making, you could enter it from the side, but you could not go past Gorge Veterinary and then make a left at the light. That side of it would be closed, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, we, one of the things we do want to do is kind of allow, you know, people walking and biking could move through there for the full width of it, but not people driving.
Thanks.
Okay, is that it, Christie?
Yep, thanks.
All right, let's go to Grant.
I don't have anything for this one. I don't know if it's part of the modeling, but it's a little bit of like a behavioral psychology question. If I'm at Rose Hours going north, sometimes I'm going to veer around to the left and go on the two-way street on 13th, I guess it depends on where I'm going, or the observations in other communities show that folks stick to the, stick to the two-lane, stick to the bigger, bigger, is it more likely that folks will go on 12th than 13th northbound?
I think the expectation is that more traffic would stay on 13th and 12th would be local access. So if you're going to businesses along 12th or to the kind of, the few blocks of residential area that are located to the east. But if you're going to the school or, you know, I know from the conversations we had with fire and emergency services, if they were trying to get somewhere east on May Street, they would, wow, Dustin, you can confirm, I, what I thought I heard is, you know, they could, they liked the idea that they had two routes, but they would more likely probably stay on 13th and then kind of take the roundabout to go east on May.
The 13th is two-way, but it remains the sort of main thoroughfare growth direction. Okay, thank you.
Megan?
I don't even know how to ask this, but I guess I'm, I'm having trouble with the logic of closing Belmont leads to this really long queue length. But if people can't, I mean, that seems like turning would be worse. So I guess what, what causes that backup at that point?
Sean, I'm going to turn this one over to you.
Sure. I think you see that with all of the traffic signal options. I don't think the long queue, it's not really a function of whether you do or do not close Belmont. It's just, it's kind of inherent with what, I don't know, it used to be called alternative three. With this three-lane 13th, you just have a lot of traffic now on 13th, and especially in the southbound direction, because it's now all in one lane, whereas at least in the northbound direction, some of that will still be on 12th. And you see that in the queue lengths, I think, pretty commonly. It's usually it's the southbound queues, almost regardless of which option you're looking at are pretty long. The northbound ones really aren't. You know, compared to the roundabouts, you know, which keep the queues very low, pretty much is what you get with alternative three with signals. You're going to get long queues.
And just to add to that, you know, the one shortbound queue length in the southbound direction here, that's the one that shifts to have two lanes. So it operates more similar to what's out there today in terms of maybe a backup.
Okay. And if you had, maybe I can self-answer this, but if you kept it where is now where Belmont's open and you only have one lane southbound, is it in the thousand to 1,400 of all these other, you know, one-way Belmonts or what would that look like?
So that's going back to sort of maintaining two-way traffic on Belmont. Is that right?
Yeah, I guess if you kept the current, yeah, I can't, my brain doesn't work. Yes, if you kept the current two-way traffic on Belmont, do you, do you know what the, like the queue length would be or?
I'm trying to remember, Nathan, if we have an alternative just like that. My guess is you're definitely still going to have long queues because we really can't get rid of those. I think the biggest difference might not be so much the queue length as it is how much average delays experienced at the intersection. It'll be considerably worse.
Yes, you're allowing more different traffic movements, which means more signal cycles.
Okay. Right. Okay. Yeah, that's helpful. Thank you.
Can I ask one more question? Has it been looked at to have that section of Belmont? The place making shared street opportunity just be turned into a one-way and so not have dual traffic go through there, but then that would allow people that live over, you know, past 12th Street to be able to easily cut over and make a safe left at a signal or right on 13th Street?
Yeah. So from those, these four kind of configurations that we looked at, option one was looking at one-way eastbound traffic and option four was looking at one-way, one-way westbound traffic. And so I think the queue lengths that you start to see are, you know, fairly similar in the option one, where you maintain eastbound direction, although it's slightly longer in the northbound direction. It does kind of go beyond Nick's Drive. Whereas the one-way option westbound backs up more. I'm just trying to gauge, May Street almost backs up to May Street. And so this is where you start to see, you know, potential impacts to the May Street intersection operations. And then also kind of longer queues in the northbound direction. And so that 850 isn't quite too Pacific Avenue. But yeah, we did look at one-way scenarios for Belmont.
Good.
Thanks. Yeah, I definitely share sort of the sentiments of Mr. Rob, who spoke just about, there is going to be a big impact in terms of people not being able to cross there. I know it's already kind of difficult, but then going left and then having to cross across on 13th seems impossible because it's already kind of difficult. So I'd be interested in really understanding what the impact is in terms of time for going all the way around. Because I would, I would also like to encourage others to go around because as we start talking about east-west and having cycles and things like that happening on the east-west streets, that's also potential impact and increasing use of those streets. So I'm just wondering if, if there's been anything that's been discussed regarding increased use because this has been closed on those east-west streets and what that does for the ability to turn left and the ability to share that space with cyclists. And if so, what's that queue or what's that, that time for someone that lives in that area, which I do as well. I use that intersection a lot. What would that look like for an impact from time wise? I just think that's all pretty relevant. If it's not known today.
Yeah, we talked a lot about how vehicles might reroute, particularly thinking more about kind of the volume of vehicles that are coming down 13th. And I think looking at the number of trips generated east of 12th Street compared to the numbers that are on 13th are relatively small. So we didn't focus and talk about as much the impact of those. And I don't know that we've done a time analysis, but we can do that based on, you know, posted speed limits and kind of expected travel speeds times the distance to go north to May, west to 13th and come back down.
I guess just anecdotally, as a resident there, I feel like I use that that way to get across because it's a lot easier than what it is currently today with less traffic on 13th to get onto 13th. So my assumption would be that most people would go down to May and have to make that round trip. So that's, that's partly why I'm thinking as well that that would have to be the way to go.
Thanks. For me, you answered one question that I had for all these backup analyses. You're counting, you're, you're looking at traffic in 2039? Is that right? Okay. So I had my questions and I just wanted to say it out loud. I do think that Brian's question about turning, you know, how do, how do people in these neighborhoods either go across to A Street, you know, the latter streets or or go south? I think that we owe them a real, you know, the system has to have a real answer. And if the answer is going around, I think that might impact how we look at east-west streets versus either going straight across to the latter streets or, or even being able to talk about turning, turning left on those things. So is that part of the next section or is that an action item for moving forward?
I think that would be something we would look at if the board wants more information to make a decision.
Gotcha. And then my last question was, my personal sense is not very many people turn, turn right going south onto Belmont. But how did you model that?
So that's people traveling east on Belmont and turning right?
No, turning, turning, they're, they're, so they're going south on 13th and then they, they turn west on Belmont. Cause, cause in some of the models you say, well, we need a whole other lane there.
As someone who basically lives at that corner, I'm going to say people do that a lot.
Yeah. And it could be, I'm just a pedestrian that doesn't pay attention. So they're welcome. So I will take that. Grant?
And a question come up, is there a point at which the population or traffic in the intersection for light becomes so much that the intersection breaks? I, for example, if whatever doubles in population size, would this intersection suddenly fail? But we've only analyzed this up to the 2039 condition and those traffic growth is based on sort of the regional assumptions and trends. I don't think, John, we've looked at this any farther out into the future. There's a requirement to.
No, no, we haven't looked at it further out than 2039. I mean theoretically, yes, at some point, all of your intersections could, could fail as you described. I think the hope also would be that as you continue to grow in the future, you're doing other things to help mitigate that, not only here, but system-wide, whether that's, you know, more high density, mixed-use development, getting people to use other modes of transportation, new street connectivity to balance the load out. So theoretically, certainly that could happen anywhere in your city, but hopefully there are other actions you can take to mitigate that.
Sure. So there's no, there's no maximum number attached to this that it would break at?
You're asking, is there a volume of, of traffic at which it would?
Which, which the queue length would be too long, it would receive a failing grade, yes.
Oh, sure there is. Sure there is.
What are, what is that?
Under this option, I would have to kind of play around with that and see.
Okay, I'd be curious to know what that is based on projecting growth rates and everything else. If we're expecting a higher growth rate of this particular intersection, may not necessarily want to build something that we might need to replace sooner or later. That's my concern. Thanks.
Anyone else last thoughts on this?
I have one, one other question. Oh my gosh, I just lost it. I, you know, I'm, oh, I know. I know that in the beginning you guys held open houses when there was three plans and you received feedback from individuals and, and businesses and all of that. Now that this is kind of becoming the preferred plan, is there any plan of outreach or collecting of comments from businesses and residents moving forward? Or is all of that collection, data collection been completed?
So that community comment is sort of part of these public meeting processes, not something separate that's included in our phase three scope as an outreach event or stakeholder meetings with business and property owners.
The scope that was approved by the agency for phase three really focused around information sharing, not necessarily survey and engagement. So opportunity to speak and view the public meetings and the updates to the materials are really the, the public facing aspect of, of this stage as, as proved by the contractor.
Thank you.
Just more of a comment, I guess, than a question. I think it does speak to what, what Mr. Boski just said about the importance of alleviation with alternative methods that Mr. Rob had said it as well during his comments. And I share that sentiment. Maybe I would use my cycle to go to Rose Hours if what we're going to talk about in Pacific was taken care of, right? So I think this is directly related to that. Just wanted to make that comment before moving on to that sentence.
And then I just thought of one other one as well, which is with, with the TSP plan or the current situation, my assumption is that it's worse than any of these. Or is that, is that true?
Now, the, the current T S P identifies that the intersection will fail based on kind of traffic growth. And that signal or roundabout is needed, but there was no additional analysis done as a part of the T S P. John, I know this next slide. Actually, I guess it was the previous May one that we included in this sort of a T S P condition. So I don't believe there's been any T S P intersection analysis done. Other than the kind of identification that it will fail and needs to be upgraded from its current condition.
Yeah. And I guess that's just the point that the current and T S P fail. And so all of these are an improvement over that. Is it? I think that's just important to. Bring out when we're comparing these things that. All of them are better than what we got.
Yeah.
Um, right. Seeing no head nods. Let's, let's keep going.
Okay. So then just kind of one last intersection slide, in case there are questions and I kind of talked a little bit about it, but. There are not anticipated to be key intersections to back up into other adjacent key intersections. And so along thirteenth street. You know, traffic at May Street and thirteenth in Belmont would operate independently with the kind of roundabout and the traffic signal. And similarly on May Street, the westbound vehicles sort of leaving the traffic signal there because of their short queue lengths. They can, would not be impacted. Okay. So next we're going to talk about east, west street design. And we started having some discussion about how these kind of play into them. And so we. You know, there was direction at our last meeting to kind of take a look at this and how this can support both. Community goals related to kind of moving people east and west across the heights that are walking and biking. And also how they can support the intersection design. So there's sort of three different scenarios, keeping existing configurations. And then changing the existing configurations to a, a combination of one and two way streets that we looked at. Then also a scenario, just looking at one way streets. And so we're going to walk through these two scenarios. So the, the first scenario is looking at a combination of one and two way streets. This is really driven by the need to accommodate. Kind of maintain circulation for east, west traffic in both directions, but then also recognize that we're trying to squeeze in. Kind of safe dedicated spaces for people biking. And so. This looks at providing one way traffic on A Street at the south end of the public center area and one way traffic. Westbound for. Taylor Avenue and providing. What's used as a kind of contra flow bike lane? And then also shared lane markings to move people biking kind of east and west. C Streets would remain two way streets similar to today, although the driving space would get narrower so that you can accommodate. Parking on both sides of the street. A, B, and C only have fifty foot right away. So they are very narrow and, and narrower than twelfth and thirteenth. Taylor has a sixty foot right of way. One of the things we also talked about was. Other opportunities to get more on street parking stall spaces out of different configurations. And so. This one and two way street combination looks at parallel parking on both sides of A, B, and C Street. And then parallel parking on one side of Taylor with angle parking on the other. And that is potentially able to get. Up to twelve additional parking stalls compared to the existing condition. So real quickly, I mentioned contra flow bike lanes. And how do you move people biking? East and west sort of two directional bike traffic when there's only a one way street. And so. There is a, a term, it's, it's a bike facility that's called a contra fold bike lane. It's used a lot of places. In different cities across the United States. And the benefits are really kind of providing that kind of connectivity and access for people going in both directions. And also reducing wrong way riding and riding on the sidewalk when there are not bike facilities in the direction that people want to go. And so we're looking at, you know, potentially. Using contra fold bike lanes or there's one way traffic to maintain that two way traffic. These work best and they're safest on low speed, low volume streets, which all of these kind of one block stretches between twelfth and thirteenth are between. A and Taylor. One thing we do want to be very. Cautious and aware of and consider moving forward in the design is how do you locate? The. Country full of bike lanes adjacent to parking, kind of thinking about. What kind of the visibility and the access and kind of how different people and different users move through those blocks. And so. Here's sort of that typical picture that shows a one way. Street here, there's parking in both sides of the street. And here you can kind of see there's striped for a bike lane going in the opposite direction. And then. Bikes that are riding, people biking with traffic would be sharing the lane with cars. And there's two little white lines here that are. The end of that bike symbol for a shared lane marking. So looking at the cross section for these east, west streets. So Taylor Avenue, I mentioned. Here on the left column, westbound traffic only. So you can kind of see a single travel lane in the middle. These little kind of Chevron symbols below it indicate that people biking would ride in that same lane. There's angle parking on one side of the street. Parallel, sorry, parallel parking on the right side of the street, angle parking on the left side and that contra flow bike lane. The image down below is an example from a street that's in Tacoma, Washington, just to sort of suggest how. Now parking on both sides of the street in this condition is actually angle parking on both sides, but what that might look like in the real world. B and C streets in the middle. Parallel parking in both sides, narrow street, kind of two way traffic. And you know, here is an example of a thirty four foot curb to curb street that allows two way travel and parking on both sides of the street. And lastly, on the right side is A Street with eastbound traffic. Very similar to that first picture that I shared to explain a contra fold bike lane. One direction of vehicle travel with people biking in that same lane. A contra fold bike lane going the opposite way and parallel parking. One of the things we have done is we have talked to fire and emergency services because these roadways all are narrower than. They would typically want with sort of a twenty foot fire access lane. And so. The kind of fire marshal is aware of the cross sections and kind of recognizing the, the context and the challenges that are presented in the heights. And they've reviewed and, you know, are comfortable moving forward with these cross sections. One of the things the project team didn't feel is that the kind of, you know, one and two way streets are less predictable for people driving. Particularly for people who aren't from the heights and maybe don't visit as often. And so that we thought this is, you know, one potential. You know, I guess you could say true drawback of having one and two way streets. And again, we see this as potentially getting up to twelve additional parking stops. So the other scenario that we looked at was alternating one way streets. Again, this idea here is to make that driving condition more predictable for people that are moving through the area. And so here we're looking at. A Street being eastbound traffic only, again, with that contra flow bike lane and kind of shade of landmarking to get people biking in both directions. B Street being westbound. C eastbound, Taylor westbound. Slightly more parking opportunity in this as we're kind of shifting from. Parallel parking in most conditions to trying to fit some angle parking on B and C streets. So again, here are the kind of typical cross sections for what these would look like. Taylor Avenue on the left side of the screen and A Street on the right side are the exact same. As a previous condition, the difference here is that B and C streets in the middle are also one way. And so here you've got one narrow travel lane with angle parking on one side of the street, parallel parking in the other. Here's a, a similar condition. This is actually a parking lot that's parallel to a roadway. And this is. Three feet wider from a curb to curb distance than what we're looking at in this sort of graphic above it. And so it is a very tight condition. It does make parking, you know. More constrained than you would. In other places you might typically want. But you can see that, you know, that there is a, it operates and it would. People can kind of navigate through. So again, kind of one way alternating streets, kind of see this as being more predictable. These lanes are even narrower with that kind of twelve foot travel lane. Again, it's something that kind of conversations with fire and emergency services. It's narrow, but. They're manageable. And so from a project team, you know, based on our review, we felt the one way streets provide that predictability. We felt that the importance of providing two way bike access of providing a contra fold bike lane. Or so people can bike both directions is something that should be explored and integrated into A and Taylor. Fire and emergency services are okay with the one way lane streets and the narrower roadways. One difference from the things we've just showed is the project team felt that parallel parking in both sides of the street would probably be better on these alternating one streets to provide more flexibility. For a variety of vehicle sizes. So. But also allows sort of a wider lane width and potentially slightly wider sidewalks, depending how you reallocate that space. In our meeting with the Urban Rural Advisory Committee on Thursday, there was support for the one way streets. There was some consideration, some questions regarding where those contra flow bike lanes are located and that preference to. See if there are opportunities to locate those bike facilities on the sidewalk side of parked vehicles rather than the roadway side of the parked vehicles. What you heard about from comments earlier. So with that, I'll turn it over to the board for discussion.
Thank you, Nathan. Great. I'm a fan of not having bikes in the street. Moving the contra, contra lanes more to be outside of where vehicles are going to be driving or parking or driving through in order to park. As opposed to having them in the street. I would agree with that recommendation. No other specific questions about it. Is, except for the one way streets, are those set to be those particular directions? On each block or would they? Is there consideration to flip them around or are they set in that particular pattern, one way back and forth?
Yeah, we, we looked at this fairly closely. And one of the challenges with the circulation in the heights is that as you move across. East, west, you know, the intersections are offset at twelfth. And so we did feel that the kind of. Locations of the direction that's shown sort of westbound on Taylor, that kind of allows that. Fine, the twelfth. Made the most sense. And similarly, and so that sort of helps set the hierarchy. But then also looking at how A Street and B Street functioned in terms of a future intersection that Belmont. So felt like those are fairly set.
Set based on hierarchy. Okay. Thanks.
Boss?
Nothing at this time.
Yeah, thanks, Nathan. I guess to the point of, of Grant's comment and public comment. Is there a reason all of the current cross sections have the contra float bike lane in the? You know, like lane of traffic in, in between traffic and parking and not on the sidewalk side? Is, was there any logic to that or?
Yes, there, there was some logic, you know, I think. No, no, that's perfectly all right. I appreciate the, the questions and the feedback. Yeah, I think, you know, shifting it to the other side, there's going to be challenges. There's, you know, we have tight right of ways. You know, that there could be a narrowing of. Sidewalk space ultimately having. Parallel part of that kind of. The, the bike lane next to a parallel park cars, you need to think about the door zone and making sure you're providing space for that. Recognizing that these are relatively low volume streets. There's not a lot of people moving through there. It's not like they're moving through a full corridor and sort of. You know, generally parking lot configuration. I think it's something we can explore. On the sidewalk side, there are other elements, you know, street signs, I'm kind of, you know, parking signs and things that need to be considered. And so. It, it, it may not be as even of a, you take the six feet here and you move it to the other side.
Okay. And I, I guess I'm just thinking, is there anything about, you know, you've got the eleven foot width, but if an emergency vehicle goes through, you do have seventeen feet. Is that part of it? Or is, or, you know, was the feedback from emergency services of just, we won't use that street?
We didn't get into that specific scenario, but I think that could be part of the discussion is, you know. What is the width of this, a single lane, you know, and twelve was okay here. And so does, you know, does it have to be? It's something that we would investigate further and kind of how to provide. That bike facility outside of the roadway environment.
Okay. And then my last one. Maybe this is more, I have other folks done this, but the, you know, parallel versus angle parking on B and C. You know, one, one of the things was because we have a, a portion of town has very long vehicles and. Is it something, I mean, can you just sign it of vehicles have to be under a certain length or they have to make sure they're in the line or like. And a little bit raised me the wrong way that we would reduce parking for everyone because a portion of town has. Generally recreational vehicles that are very large and. And maybe they just can have less convenient parking than some other, like.
Yeah. I mean, I, I think, you know, in terms of signing it, it comes down to enforcement, just like, you know. Speed limits on streets and kind of getting people to obey stop signs. Generally, there are people that follow the rules and people that are sort of, don't realize it or don't think about it or don't care. So I think that that could be a, you could sign it that way and keep it.
One, one other thing that we are looking at is given the. Small amount of real estate we have to work with, it's not like we have an abundance left over for sidewalks and. And other uses. So the borrow of seventeen feet is, will be well used elsewhere, probably. And it, and it's balancing act, you know, six foot sidewalk is. Is uncomfortable in terms of an urban environment that maybe have zero, maybe has zero setback. So part of the, part of this bar is returning, we'll, we'll have this in another conversation is. Reallocation of that space to other elements, whether it's the bike lane, whether it's a sidewalk to have something that. That feels a little more gracious, especially if you look at an angle parking scenario, seventeen feet, you should anticipate some bumper overhang there. You have. If you have a foot or two feet of overhang, now you have six feet of sidewalk with no four and a half clear area. We're starting to get rid of it. Now, now we're beginning about, you know, talking about E D A instructions and, and really starting that to an uncomfortable level.
You also have. Street signs that I mentioned, and you've got utility poles that need to be fit into that six and a half foot space or six feet back of curb space.
Okay. And just for my reference, and this is more for Dustin, but like existing sidewalks on B and C, you know what the width is?
They don't exist on all the blocks continuously. They probably aren't more than six feet. I don't recall offhand.
Existing nine. I know it's ten foot on thirteen.
Twelve and thirteenth, it's yeah, nine and a half feet behind the curb.
You can take a look and I can tell you based upon size of square.
Yeah, I, I do share the sentiment of. What, what many have said before, we'll can comment on that answer. And, and, and understand it's a challenge. I, I just, as a cyclist also in town here have a, have a real problem with. Angled parking backing out into me, right? It's the scariest scenario that I. Experienced. So I, I know it's a challenging problem to think about moving. To the sidewalk side, but. I, I just foresee a lot of challenges for cyclists. Maybe they should be going around. Figuring out something that way. But yeah, it's, I acknowledge it's a difficult problem, but I share the sentiment of all the comments. Yeah, that's it. Christie?
Nothing at this time. Thank you.
lettuce?
Thank you. I had a similar question to Megan around just fire and, and ambulance. Glad to hear that there's going to be some follow up. I, I don't know the measurement of a fire truck versus an ambulance and which one's wider or longer and whatnot. Well, yes, definitely understanding a fire truck is longer for sure. But glad to hear that there's going to be follow up on that. The, the other question that I had, and you were all talking about it in the previous comment was around street sign and whatnot. I don't. See convert. At what point are we going to have conversations with transportation partners, right? If we want to talk about the future and really support and encourage. Public transportation being used, where are those stops going to be located throughout some of these plans? And, you know, are we accommodating? A shelter that's being put so that if it's raining, individuals have the opportunity to have that space available to them?
That'll be, that'll be next chapter, next chapter in this presentation.
I, I recognize that's in the next piece, but is that also something that we're factoring in? If we're talking about adding any sort of street signs and whatnot, then also thinking about. Sheltered space and whatnot to encourage future public transportation use as opposed to driving your own vehicles or parking your vehicles. Sheltered space and whatnot to encourage future public transportation use as opposed to driving your own vehicles or parking your vehicles.
Yeah, so the, the east-west streets don't currently have any transit stops. Actually, none of the heights, none of our projects that year at 12th, 13th, or these east-west streets have. Transit stops within them today. We have coordinated with the Columbia Area Transit. They are interested if the city is interested in having stops on 12th and 13th in the future, and so we are. Considering how those can be planned for and accommodated along the 12th and 13th, but I don't think. There would likely to be transit stops between A and Taylor on those east-west streets.
Let us, anything else?
I'm just thinking, not at this time.
I, I thought of something, one thing.
Hold on, let's let Tim talk first.
Okay, sorry.
Thanks, Mark. Just kind of a general observation. That there's, there seems to be a lot of thought, obviously understandably, given to. How car traffic is moving through these areas. And maybe less so for how bike traffic. Is moving through. And I think since part of what we're trying to do here is to encourage people to be on their bikes. And walk, it might be useful. And I think this has already been said. Have some examples about how people get from point A to point B. For some, some popular locations. I think that that would. Be illustrative and, and I think be a good outreach component.
Yeah, Christie, you had another question.
So sorry, and this kind of, I, you, we mentioned utilities and how we have to work with utility bolt, utility poles on these side streets. Is the assumption on, not on the side streets, but on 12th and 13th, that any design plan that happens will also include undergrounding the utilities?
Yeah, so as we move forward, we are going to be taking a look at utilities and specifically undergrounding. I know going back to the original urban renewal. Plan, that was one of the primary goals was undergrounding. I actually think a, a lot of the distribution is on. Well, there's some in the alleys, yes, that is something we're going to be looking at as this moves forward and sort of the. The curb locations are set and we can kind of understand a, a future street environment and kind of what space we have to work with.
Thank you.
Okay, I just had a couple of things for me. One, just noting that, the, the June to Taylor Wiggle. They have to go around now. Find it, find the, find the. Taylor Wiggle just gets forced to do the outer line.
The, the arrows make it look the other way, but they would be able to shoot west. The big, the big arrows are the share.
There's a bike, got it, all right, this, all right, two demerits for Mark, that's, that's okay. Got it. My, my sense, and it's just intuition, is that the contra-direction lanes, bike lanes on the. Inside of parking is probably the smart way to do for really sophisticated bike culture people. What we're, what we're talking about is kids going from Main Street to the middle school and, and I, so, so my sense is that. Having the bike line against the sidewalk is. Feels safer to me. I, I, I'm not an expert, but I would, I would think that we would want to study that. And then I, I was going to say, let's, let's trade off sidewalk width and some of those east-west because they're not as pedestrian. Super central, your point about going over the curb, I don't know if bollards or something, something spiky. Is, is possible to address that in other cities, but. Maybe there's a way to get a six-foot sidewalk that stays a six-foot sidewalk. I don't, I don't know. Then is everything, I had any last questions on this? Seeing none, let's, let's sputter.
All right. Now, we're going to shift over to 12th and 13th Street, and so, you know, the preferred concept for the hybrid two-way traffic on. 13th, one-way traffic on 12th has very unique characteristics and needs to move people in different modes of traffic, and so. We've really taken a, a deeper dive at what these cross-sections look at for potential refinements. Based on kind of the, the community process and design process that we've gone through for the last year and a half. And so, you know, looking here at 12th Street, here's the typical cross-section that came out of that kind of preferred design alternative, and so what we're really looking at in terms of. Dimensions for, and thinking about, we'll walk through a sort of. What's the dimension and sort of sizing for this angle parking space in terms of turnover and accommodating, being able to accommodate a variety of vehicle sizes? And then thinking about how people biking along 12th. What are their edge conditions against a sidewalk, against the travel lane? Here you can see in this graphic, it was shown at the sidewalk elevation in that. Luminary design alternative cross-section. And what are the implications for implementation in terms of cost and maintaining the different parts of the public right-of-way? And so we're going to start talking through. Kind of sizing of parking, so. The cross-section dimension that was shown in that is kind of based on this street right here. It's a kind of downtown Main Street. It's a two-way street, very slow. It's a project that I worked on. Ten plus years ago, and that 16-foot dimension works really well. However, there's a two-way street next to it, and so when people do pull in and then back, back out, there is a little bit of breathing room provided. By having an extra lane of traffic going in the opposite direction. When you think about that being a bicycle facility. You want to make sure that you're providing a space that isn't. Always needing to encroach on that buffer between people biking and the travel lane, and so want to think a little bit more about that dimension and. As part of that conversation, the city has design standards for parking lots and looking at a 45-degree angle parking stall and a travel lane width. Now, there are dimensions of 17 and a half feet and 12, so a little bit wider in total than what we were looking at before. Another source that we've used for other projects, including this kind of downtown street project, now it looks at 17 and a half foot parking with an 11-foot travel lane, and so. How can we right-size that, this picture in the bottom right? Is the street that shows angled parking, a travel lane and a two-way cycle track very similar? To what we're looking at for 12th, but this street is two feet wider, and so kind of start to get a sense for. And the width, we've, we've been showing pull-in angle parking as opposed to back-in angle parking. There's been a couple of people that observed and made a comment that, you know. Back-in angle parking is safer, and, and that's actually when you're adjacent to bike facilities, also when you're adjacent to a travel lane. The people when they're pulling back into traffic have a better view of where cars are. So it's something we can talk about as we move forward. If angled parking exists places, one kind of side comment is there are typically larger ranges of. Overhang for the rear car as opposed to the front car overhang, and, you know, a pickup is a great example where that rear overhang is, you know, multiple feet compared to a typical sort of two-foot overhang for a sedan. One of the other items that we're looking at is the width of the cycle track, you know, as we're balancing our 60 feet and really thinking about how do we kind of get the best use. For everybody, recognizing that there's compromises across all of the modes and trying to create just enough friction so that people are moving safely. Whether they're walking, biking, or driving, but also providing something that works for all. So, you know, we heard in one of the previous comments, you know, the, the desired minimum for a two-way cycle track is 12 feet, you know, in a constrained condition. You know, there are opportunities to kind of go down lower. There's also guidance for that kind of separation distance. One of the things that we've been looking at now, in addition to kind of. Local and kind of domestic best practices, what are other best practices and design guidances abroad where there's been a longer history of cycling? And so in the Netherlands, they have a design manual called the Crow Design Manual. They have some specific, you know, width required or. Minimums for cycle tracks based on volumes, and so. Here you can see, you know, when you have zero to 50 people biking per hour, you know, they recognize that you may be able to go down to eight feet. And then London Cycling Design Standards also have some absolute minimum lists that they share, so we're looking at a variety of. Design guidance. To kind of right-size all of the cross-section elements along 12th Street. One of the other things that we really want to think about is the protection and the separation for people biking between the sidewalk and the roadway. In terms of constructability and maintenance, one of the challenges. Moving along 12th Street is when you have a bike facility approaching an intersection, you need to make sure that people that are walking across the street can get up and down. Crosswalk, curb ramps, and the landings at the top and those bottoms aren't. Being compromised by the bike facility, also kind of configurations at driveways. And then, you know, how does different elements in that buffer zone allow for emergency access? So this is something we haven't landed on a project recommendation, but it's something that we're looking closely at and really thinking about different times of the year with snow in the winter. As well as, you know, higher usage in the summer, better weather months. And so going through and kind of thinking about these, at the top, we've got our original cross-section. Dimensions, these top two rows are some of the parking dimensions that I mentioned, and so you can kind of see kind of a. Widths and lane widths for those. The next few rows show some of the biking dimension minimum width, so kind of a two-foot minimum width for the London Design Manual and some consideration. And some circumstances for a cycle track, some of the minimum two-way cycle track widths, and then, you know, from a sidewalk standpoint, really. What is sort of an optimal minimum for a sidewalk, and so at the bottom. Cross section here are some sort of. Current refinements to the cross-section along 12th that slightly increases the parking. Increases that existing sidewalk along the east side and primarily. To provide ADA access at intersections and kind of thinking about that circulation drives the two-way cycle track dropping to road grade. But then some of the comments we heard this tonight are really about, you know, concerns or questions related to the minimum dimet- dimension here for the two-way cycle track. Looking at 13th Street, we're also kind of studying this in terms of the three-lane roadway cross-section to provide that center turn lane and the existing. You know, built environment out that's out there, and so 13th actually has a 50-foot right-of-way with five-foot easements on either side, and so there are some places where there are. Existing conditions that sort of reduce the current available width, and so. We're looking at, you know, how can the cross-section be refined or kind of be adjusted where those conditions exist, and then also in terms of calming traffic along 13th, recognizing that is the higher priority. Road for cars now. So looking at, you know, the. East sidewalk, we've no longer have a parking lane buffering the travel lane from the sidewalk, and so recognizing that that's not a comfortable. Place to walk, we really want to provide some separation between the travel lane and people walking, and so. Reducing that sidewalk from nine and a half feet behind the curb to six foot, six foot is a. Common minimum width that allows people walking side by side along the sidewalk, and so that kind of three and a half foot planting strip and. Kind of sidewalk width is similar to what exists out there on Main Street along the south edge of the hospital today. So there is, you know, some opportunity to get some, you know, low vegetation, potentially some kind of trees, and they're one of the things that. Will need to be thought about is these would be columnar trees, so they're not getting hit by kind of trucks and vehicles as they're passing, so taller, thinner trees. And thinking about tools that we can use to get enough soil volume and then to be healthy long-term. Looking at some of the places, you know, I mentioned that it's a 50-foot right-of-way with five walk, five-foot easements for sidewalks on either side of the street. There are some conditions. Here's an image of the apartment building at A and 13th where there's actually a, a built ramp and stairway that is within that five-foot easement, so there are some constraints. Along 13th that over time as properties develop can be managed. But we're looking at, you know, potentially narrow sidewalks in a few places where you don't have that immediate sidewalk width. We're also looking at, you know, how can we design 13th Street to provide traffic calming, and so there's a variety of tools we can use to slow vehicles down. One of the ones we've been talking about A and Taylor is kind of important east-west crossings for people walking and biking, and so how can we incorporate medians? Provide some refuge in the middle of the street. We talked about those pedestrian activated beacons or RFBs. Earlier, provide increased awareness for people crossing the street, and so looking at incorporating those at Taylor and A Street. On the west side of the street where there's on-street parking, incorporating curb extensions to shorten that street crossing and provide a little more friction for people driving along the roadway. And then also, long-term, we talked about, you know. If and when Columbia Area Transit wants to have bus stops on 13th, what are the opportunities to incorporate that? And so here. When we last met with Kat, they were interested in potentially having a future bus stop along. 13th, that's the south end of the corridor, and we kind of identified, you know, 13th and A could be an opportunity where you provide a curb extension, you provide that shelter, and this is also that. Sidewalk area that I mentioned could be constrained at the back of walks, so doing a curb extension provides you a little more breathing room. In addition to getting your bus stop and shelter for the sidewalk, so these are a variety of things. As we have confirmation on the east-west street design, and it sounds like there's some interest in alternating one-way streets, we can continue to explore and refine those strategies for traffic calming and. How those east-west movements and the turning access that's needed might vary by intersection. So, project team recommendations, continue to incorporate the refinements that we've been talking about tonight. One of the things. Know that we've talked a lot about with Dustin recently is, you know, the 10-foot sidewalk zone that is accommodated within 12th and 13th Street that's out there today. Has shown in each of these cross-sections is really the minimum that you would want, and so, you know, looking long-term, are there opportunities to provide. Easements as properties are developing or acquire right-of-way to expand that sidewalk zone from 10 feet to 12 feet? On 12th Street, 12th Street, we want to continue to look at the, you know, type of separation between the cycle track and vehicle. Vehicles to provide that balance between safety, emergency access and flexibility and kind of protecting people biking. And then on 13th, continue to explore those traffic calming strategies that I just mentioned after the east-west street design. Has been identified and also the Belmont intersection. Feedback from the YRAC, I generally support the refinements. There was some comment and concern regarding the eight-foot. Two-way cycle track and the YRAC supported narrowing parking or changing angle parking to parallel parking along 12th to provide more width for the two-way cycle track. So, turn it back over to the board.
Okay, let's start in zooming in this thing. Tim, what do you got?
Yes, I would. Support. The YRAC comments. Figure out ways to either narrow the parking. Or change it to a parallel parking to increase the. The width of the two-cycle track. I guess a general question, I don't know whether it's for Dustin or not, but you know, if. We went from 16 to 17 to 16, what type of vehicles would not be able to park there?
Sorry, what, what was what vehicle?
The angle parking, if we reduced it from 17 to 16 feet, what types of vehicles?
Well, so just for example, you know, we talked about this at the YRAC, meaning the Sprinter man kept getting kicked around, however, if you look at a. You know, a non-Sprinter arrangement, say Ford F-150 pickup is 19 feet long, Subaru Forester is 15 feet and about eight inches long, so. You're, you're moving into the, the four-door, you're, you're moving the Subaru land as being a tight arrangement, and it's not only a function of. How long that parking space is, but one thing that we're thinking about too is, is you need to. How long that parking space is, but uh one thing that we're thinking about too is is you need to back this vehicle out. So if you're looking at a parking drive aisle of twelve feet, these these vehicles and your ability to get them out. Into a single lane without backing up into uh the bike lane, it becomes also increasingly difficult, so it's not just a function of how. Deep that parking spaces is how much real estate is left over to back this thing out and and get out in one pass or two, so. Um I don't think there's, we're not designed to the. You know, to the A level recreation vehicle, I think any vehicle, typical passenger sized vehicle that you see here. It's it's gonna be tight, it's 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 gonna be a tight scenario.
I guess, given that, I mean, even with what I'm hearing you say, even with the seventeen foot stall. That backing a sprinter van out of there probably is not a good idea, is that correct?
Yeah, I I you're not done with that. I mean, you're you're not talking about a twenty-three foot, twenty-one foot long vehicle. It's seventeen feet isn't gonna get the job done.
And and that is um kind of there's one comment that is, you know, as we were talking about the east west streets. One of the reasons why that final recommendation was for parallel parking um along all the streets with one way traffic. Just because it provided a little more flexibility um for a range of vehicle sizes.
Yes, my final question is, is if. Obviously, if you were to move to parallel parking from angle parking, there would be a reduction in parking spaces. Um do you have a feel for what that would be?
Yeah, there are forty-one existing parking spaces, peril um. Parallel parking spaces, thirty-five, thirty-five parallel parking spaces on the west side of 12th, if you go to angle parking, you get forty-one, so. We we created six by going to angle parking, so that's you would lose six stalls.
And if you were to go to parallel parking, how much?
Yeah, roughly a lot.
With would you gain, with would you gain for the cycliter?
Well, you would go from that seventeen foot dimension, a typical parallel stall is eight feet, so there's nine feet to reallocate, so you could take. You could take two of those feet and put them to the cycle track, you could put two to each sidewalk. Um on either side, and you'd have a couple of feet to probably apply to the travel lane to kind of make sure things sort of. Move through there for people parking and turning at intersections.
I think I would support that. Thank you.
Uh Gladys.
Uh no further questions from me right now, but uh agree with Counselor Kunnahan and. Except the Yorac uh comments around um narrowing parking or continuing to look at other options for parallel parking.
Uh Christine?
So if it was moved to parallel parking, what would be the length of vehicle that would be able to be in there?
Well, it's it's a continuous parking lane, typically um when they're striped, a lot of agencies, cities stripe them for a twenty feet stall. There's kind of little nuances here or there, but um yeah, if it's a fully parked street, you could assume that maybe twenty feet. Um but I think we all have experienced kind of going somewhere and seeing the a half a stall that's not there or, you know. A longer stall, so it's, you know, it kind of depends on how people are using it, and you know, parking management isn't something um. That's done in the heights, and so, you know, if you were to strike them for certain ways, there could be some education and um component to that. Or unfortunately, if that was needed.
Yeah, I mean, because, yes, the sprinter van comes up quite often, but I'm also thinking of upper valley people. With um long bed trucks and wanting to be able to support them to be able to access businesses in the heights. So I think that. Um personally, I'd rather see some flexibility for parking for longer vehicles. And and also some flexibility to increase some sidewalk space and. You know, six spots is not a. It's not a terrible amount based upon your um. Your previous data of of parking usage in the area, um so I'd rather have the. The flexibility for the different sized vehicles.
Anything else, Christine?
No, I think that's, well, the one thing is, is that um just based upon. Seeing what happens in areas like downtown and now on the waterfront, having a business down there and. All of that, like the the intention of planting trees and having lots of trees. Um I understand the intent, it's to provide these canopies and shade, but as. The city is dealing with now and waterfront's about to need to start dealing with now is. Um the root structures from trees really do cause long term damage to sidewalks for accessibility and all of that. And so I like the um, I like the ideas of seeing those two foot or three foot buffers. Maybe only including low, low shrubs and grasses that aren't gonna have those. Larger root systems or having the breakaways that um emergency vehicles can use.
Anything else?
Yeah, I'll just echo the sentiments of the Yorac and a few others about um. I'm in favor of losing these spaces for a bigger cycle track because I feel like that will add more of the sudden the cycle and reduce traffic.
Um, well, I guess I'm a little bit gonna say I disagree with Christie of trees are pretty critical to the downtown. Or or uptown economic core of like, you know, the heat island effect type thing. Um I know there's challenges with roots, but I'd I'd like us to make sure we're providing shade. I I'm hearing everyone on the larger cycle track. I mean, I'm generally supportive, I think we're stuck in the like, this right away is just not big enough for everything, and I'm. I guess I'm wondering, one, the original cross section only had eight feet of sidewalk on the. I don't know which uh east side. Um what was the thought process for expanding that versus keeping the cycle track at ten?
I think the biggest thing, well, I guess there's there's two, is is one, the cycle track um being at the same level of it. Doesn't, it creates challenges at intersections where people are trying to cross the street and go down curb ramps. Uh or wait to find the spot, um but an eight foot or nine foot parking space is really. Too narrow for this type of street environment, um you know, you've got your with zero lot line buildings, you've got a kind of one. Foot shy zone that people aren't gonna walk right along the building, you also have street signs and utility poles on the other side, and so you really get down to a pretty narrow sidewalk. And looking at the blueprint for urban design, um so ODOT sort of design guidance for kind of these kind of um main street configurations. Ten and a half foot sidewalk is really the bare minimum that you would want to have, and so, you know, as we're trying to right size things and seeing the potential. Complex or things to work through from a bike sidewalk, it became. Um now that felt like slightly widening the sidewalk made sense.
Okay, um and I guess that's maybe more a comment than a question, but everyone else has been doing it of. So I will, um. If we, I mean, we've heard a lot about, you know, future parking needs in in the area, um we're getting rid of some parking already. Is there, if you've got seventeen feet of parking, change it to an eight foot, can you do parking on both sides of the travel lane? And then you stand, you get a nine foot. Cycle track, or I mean, like, are there other ways to do it, or is it really like the current proposed configuration or?
Yeah, you're not, you're not going to be able to split angle parking into um parallel on both sides.
You can't support parallel on both sides?
No, changing that seventeen feet with kind of door zones and travel lane widths um. That would not work.
So that takes more than eight feet to help.
So you typically would stripe at eight feet, and that's what it is, when you look at the door zones and the edge conditions of those. As you start to provide the minimums for everything, a minimum condition for one thing might work in the context of other. Um adjacent uses that are not the minimum, but as you have everything down to the constrained minimums, you start to lose functionality and. I think that's what would happen with parallel parking on either side of a a narrow travel lane and next to a cycle track.
Okay. I.
I I wanna highlight that slide, a few slides back, the different volumes of cycle traffic. Really make different sizes of cycle track appropriate, and it's not like there's seven hundred and fifty people an hour, so. That that made a lot of sense to me. No other questions?
Yeah, um. Let me piggyback on the counselor's question about parallel parking on that street. Are there other streets where you have a parallel parking um set up next to the travel lane of eight feet? Um why would that not apply on 12th? It does, I guess I was referring in having parallel parking on both sides of a twelve foot travel lane. And then having a two way cycle truck on the other side, so eight foot parallel parking would absolutely work next to a travel line.
Okay, but not on both sides of the street?
Yeah, correct, I I think you're starting to kind of have a lot of um minimum dimensions that are stacking up next to each other, and you're gonna start to. See things not operate very well, and while, you know, most of the traffic has shifted. To 13th, I think there is still a need to sort of move some vehicles through here to have access, and I think it would be challenging. Um to have parallel parking on both sides.
Okay, thanks, um. Based on the cross section, uh we have angled parking at seventeen feet um in the cross section, correct?
Yes.
Um going back to our basic geometry, that is a parking stall depth of what? Seventeen times the square root of two, which is twenty-four feet. Um based on a seventeen foot cross section, your angle parking, assuming a forty-five degree parking angle. Is a twenty-four foot depth parking stall, correct?
No, that's not correct, that assumes that um. The the lanes are, the the lines, the way they offset in an angle parking, that assumes that you're having the same amount of overlap. And one wheel in front that you would have in the other with the sidewalk, but the curb doesn't allow that, so it's. If that's not the correct number, I know we've talked about it, it might be, if you were to chop off at the curb and chop off. At the travel lane and look at the actual um parallel length, it's actually less than seventeen feet.
You're saying each angled parking stall depth is seventeen feet, is that what this cross section says?
Yes, so the the depth from curb to travel line is seventeen feet. Perpendicular to the curb.
Yes, we're talking about the same thing, angle parking is at a forty-five degree angle, correct?
Yes, I think this this would be.
Fifty, rounding, so I'm gonna use forty-five, um so the distance of a vehicle. At roughly a forty-five degree angle from the edge of the travel lane to the curb. Is not seventeen feet because it's at an angle.
Correct.
That distance would then be whatever that length is times the square root of two.
The length of the line is correct, the striping, the striping line.
Is this, does the math not work because the cars?
Cars are at angle, they're not.
Wide or whatever versus a one lines?
Yes. This is if for, if you wanted to orient a car parked at forty-five degrees, the northern, say we were looking north on 12th Street. The northern wheel is approximately five to six feet off the curb line because it is parked at forty-five. So that's where we start losing that functional depth of twenty-four because the car. The the zero is not a decoder, the zero can be. Yeah, I understand, we're also measuring across the vehicle diagonally as well, I understand that. Um so I just wanted to make sure that we're using the correct numbers to evaluate the actual depth of a vehicle if we're gonna use angle park. So my question is, is at what depth, because that is a topic that we brought up, what is the depth of a vehicle? That we could use for that angled parking if it's seventeen feet across?
We can follow up with you and provide that.
Yeah, thanks.
I don't have that.
Thanks, and then uh another question I has on 13th in the refuge lane. Uh for interest in traffic calming, would it be possible or applicable, and this might be a question for staff, um to. Potentially plant pipe friendly uh trees in the refuge lane to break that up uh for a traffic calming effect? Or is that out? There is some median opportunities that will look at um the issue, and you see those on the north and south end. Uh we will, I I will definitely push everyone to do as much median planning as possible, the trick becomes on the short block. Uh the amount of time it takes and the amount of essentially runway between the streets, these blocks are two hundred and fifty feet apart. So uh getting median in there and allowing cars to queue and queue out limits our opportunity in the middle, but we'll be, I'll. I'll be pushing Nathan for as much medium as possible to in the middle of the bird. Whether there's tree planting or whether it's just something to at least limit the field, but you know, both Nathan and John have. Been tested on on trying to do as much media and and they definitely that center lane has been showing up in the. And the science is needed for capacity because we're pushing all the traffic on here, those median and those bays become shorter and or. The length become a certain amount that there, you know, if I got six feet of median in between there, it's just becomes a speed bump. Um but we'll be pushing for as much of that as possible.
Okay, thanks.
Alright, so I guess this gears into thoughts, is there a certain thing, is thirty degree angle in parking? Is a, is that a thing?
Yes, the the other are different angles um of angle parking that can be used, and the um. The length along the curb changes as you make them flatter. Uh and get closer to a pen, so the the number of stalls you might have um would change. The other thing that changes is the the width of the lane next to it to kind of accommodate that turning movement.
Um understood, okay, uh I I choose sort of like the ten foot wavelength, um. I I certainly got eleven foot travel lane and twelve, just to slow things down, if it looks securely close, though. They won't go forty, uh um so that and and that's, we we have some of the cross sections with a twelve. But uh traffic lane, I think, so, I mean, a lot, uh so, as I was thinking, you know, while you were talking. And and then just the another, during some of these things is uh sprinter vans, building out the, you allow the parallel park. Well, they can go and. Angling part, they can go for a whole park on thirteen, so they can. Those are places, so that's okay. Uh that's everything, I had any other questions from the crew, or we? Keep going, or take a break? This is a, Nathan, where are we with respect to the end of the year?
We have a, we have a fairly short topic on the Pacific Bike Connection, and then a quick update on parking. Based on what we've talked about.
So so I suggest we do, get to the end of that before we let her in. You may, sure, I mean, okay, uh I carry on.
Alright, so looking at the bicycle connection to Pacific, this is something the board asked the project team to take a look at, it was beyond. Um the original kind of project study boundary, and so the task was kind of do a quick look and kind of, you know. From a cross section standpoint, how could you make a connection um south to Pacific? That aligns with the hybrid design concept and the two way cycle track on 12th. Now, here's a quick kind of graphic showing the existing street cross section. Um fourteen foot outside travel lanes and then three interior travel lanes, I guess the widest spot, the the. Interior um turn lane isn't continuous for the entire stretch, and then there are two narrow sidewalks on the east side. Um there's a, you know, six foot sidewalk and a two foot sort of buffer and then a fence before that slope starts to drop down to Indian Creek Trail. Or Indian Creek. So we looked at one scenario that sort of stayed um along or at at the roadway level. Roadway grade elevation sort of widen the roadway, and so this looked at providing a shared path for walking and biking. Uh we're looking at shared space here rather than a dedicated two way cycle track and a sidewalk, just to kind of keep the overall width. To sort of a a a smaller footprint, recognizing that this will require um some building on top of the slope and a new retaining wall. Um so this looks at narrowing those existing travel lanes and getting five feet out of that space um to. Um, and to widen the sidewalk and then building into that slope, and so this cross-section provides a five-foot planting strip. You know, you have an opportunity with street trees, ideally, you would have twelve spa- twelve feet. Um, for a shared-use path for shared walking and biking, and then a a couple of feet at the back um to provide a kind of. Buffer from uh a fence that would be required, and then that kind of allows the construction of that retaining wall. This would require the existing utility poles to be relocated, um, as, you know, may end up going in the planting strip. Which could limit the height of trees. Um, one of the things that happens at the south end of the corridor closer to uh Pacific is the. Public property stops and you've got a private parcel at the gas station in Dutch Brothers where you are constrained, and so doing something with the same width. Won't work, um, but this would allow a connection from the two-way cycle track south to Belmont. The other cross-section that we looked at, um, rather than looking at separated bike and walking, because this really kind of provided the. What we felt is sort of the um. Most bang for your buck, I guess you could say. Now alternatively, you know. What if you can't widen that at the road level and is there an alternative where you go outside of the ODOT right-of-way? You know, so this would route people walking and biking, or I guess people biking down the Indian Creek Trail. You know, there's thirty feet of elevation change to go down and to come back up, not ideal for anyone that's trying to um encourage. And um cycling um and kind of grow the number of trips. Um, you would still have the same constraint at that Dutch Brothers um parcel in the gas station. And so, project team's recommendation is a shared use path along the roadway, so providing that, you know, twenty-foot space from the. Face of new curb back to a fence and to provide that direct access for people biking and. Um, the URAC supported providing something at street grade, there were some. Questions and discussion on whether there should be dedicated facilities for people walking and biking rather than a shared um space here. So with that, I'll turn over to the board.
Paul, the retaining wall looks really expensive. Did did, did you guys look at cost differences at all, like between retaining law and going down to the river?
No, the the kind of what we had included in our scope was just a a kind of quick cross-section valuation. How might you continue a two-way cycle track or a bike facility and a walking facility south to Pacific?
Got it, okay, thanks.
Um, is the proposed retaining wall here, is that at the extent of the ODOT right-of-way? Or could you go further east? It would obviously cost more and be a bigger retaining wall, but is is that like a legal limit or just a estimated limit?
This location is based on kind of providing, you know, a twelve-foot shared-use path is your standard width, and so it's providing that standard. Kind of typical facility with, and so I I think you could go wider, um. Dustin could probably answer, I don't know the ownership of the, basically the career, I'm assuming that's all city-owned, um. And so.
Uh, only only portion, but would be parks and rec, and then you would get into Meadows property, Meadows advertising.
So I think in the north and south ends, you're probably running into some private property constraints at the edge of the ODOT right-of-way.
Okay, um, and then with the. You know, narrowing of the traffic lanes from like fourteen to twelve, twelve, eleven. Does that, and that would, is that just naturally slow traffic down because everyone's gonna feel like they're gonna get hit or? What does that look like in real life, or do we have examples of that kind of traveling for that many lanes?
So these widths are based on, and the narrowed widths are based on the sort of those minimum widths that. From the ODOT Design Manual and the kind of blueprint for urban design for this type of roadway, so I think our thought was that these would. Should be acceptable to ODOT, but we haven't reviewed this cross-section with them. But yeah, narrower lanes should slow people down a bit.
Thank you.
Uh, is this type of shared use? Proposal, uh, is it, can you demonstrate or point to examples where it works in in other cities or? Anything of that nature?
Yeah, what widely use a shared use path is uh an extremely common type of um shared um. Pathway for people walking, biking, um, there's design guidance is provided by um. ASHTA, the American Association for State Highway Transportation Officials, so it's, you know. Before there were cycle tracks, there were on-street bike lanes, just conventional five-foot bike lanes and shared use path off. Um, so it's, yeah, it's a very known um type of facility and sort of use. Um, and sort of the evaluation of how wide a shared use path needs to be.
Yeah, I mean, I I obviously have concerns about. Uh, precisely what was, you know, sort of discussed earlier and, you know, part of what Mike and Randy was showing, um, that that's. I know quite a bit narrower uh than what's supposed, but it does seem. To me that without that having a very, being a very passable space for that's reasons and cyclists that people will continue to drive. So, um. I think that will be the hardest thing to sell from from this whole thing, uh, so I, I do appreciate it's difficult to, with the amount of space that you have, but. That's gonna be a tough one, I think.
Uh, Chrissy?
Having the shared use bike ped lane down below offers some. Aesthetics for the user to be away from the traffic, but it also. Um, adds some eight um safety concerns of, you know. Being n- not visible from the road, and so I'm a little torn on that, I agree with um. Mayor Blackburn that that retaining wall seems like it's going to be, and fence is going to be very expensive. And I just wonder if that shared in, you know, I'm great with plants and things, but. What would it look like if we didn't have the five feet for planting some shrubs and just had it be. Just bike and ped that put in that extra three feet with a retaining wall and a fence.
So, uh, a five-foot separation from a travel lane is a requirement um for a shared use path. Or you'd have to have a vehicular barrier, and so if you got rid of the five-foot kind of planting a tree between the path and the road, you'd be narrowing that down to. Maybe two and a half feet of a concrete barrier.
Okay, thank you for that, that's helpful.
I guess it doesn't have to be a a concrete barrier, you could have, and they're the um Federal Highway Administration has sort of a. A wooden guardrail that they use in a lot of their scenic routes, and so there are different ways, so it'd be a vehicular barrier that has some width to it. Um, rather than a a five-foot separation, so just to clarify that. But there's something to provide physical separation.
Okay, yeah, I was just trying to avoid the retaining wall, um. And that, that, because that that seems very cost prohibitive.
Anything else, Chrissy?
No, thank you.
Gladys?
Yeah, thank you. I recognize this is challenging and, you know, Nathan, uh, Dustin, I almost called you Dylan, sorry. Everybody on the team, thank you so much for looking into this thirty, uh, page thirty-two or a packet does have that second image, right, where it's. Um, there are bicyclists and pedestrians that are further down in the area. Um, as opposed to this image that we see here on the screen. I hear the safety concerns, but are there? Is there something that we could do to address those safety concerns? Is it like a lighting issue, right? Because as as we listen to Megan and and the students that are going to be using the sidewalks, it does make most sense, right, to have image two. That would allow for bicycling and pedestrians to have more space down, yeah, this one, down below.
So, far, far more than a safety thing, I I it's really, there's an elevation issue that I, you know, to Doug's point of. Will people use this? Is it gonna get people off of the, you know, out of their cars? That that slope from Dutch Brothers down to the Indian Creek Trail is just not, unless you're. A very good biker is not something I think the average person or average child is is gonna do. And I think that's, to me, that seems like a far bigger barrier than a, you know, a light lighting or something down there.
I agree with that, it's super stupid.
You'd probably need an electric cycle to do it.
Yeah, yeah, totally, and I hear that, but I'm just thinking at the other image that was added or on the screen that has a five-foot. Uh, setback for for any sort of plants, right, that's a federal regulation, I understand that too. I guess to me, it's just concerning, yes, this image. Of individuals or, you know, kiddos running into. Into pedestrians or vice versa, right, as I hear the comments of there are students that would prefer to be. Uh, riding next to each other, is this gonna allow for that room for that to take place? Um, I'm not suggesting we need to go with option two, right, the other image that was added, but I guess I'm just thinking these. Uh, items out loud.
For a local point of context, we're talking about twelve feet, what is twelve feet, uh, the waterfront path through. Through waterfront park is varies between twelve and twenty. So, um, in terms of, and that's your shared use path, you walk on it, you bike on it, you. Run your dog down it, that that's your local point of context in terms of, uh, like what what twelve feet is in in Hood River and. And it varies throughout it, but that's generally speaking, that.
Thank you, that's a great example.
Anything else, Gladys?
No, just I recognize this is hard and trying to think about the future and what works best for our community. And I just appreciate all the input from our pub, from the community members on what it is that they that they need.
Tim, anything for you on this one?
Uh, thanks, Mark, I wanna say that I do really appreciate the the development of this particular. Scenario, I think it's a good starting point for us to think about, you know, how that might be structured. Um, I think with this and all the rest of things we've discussed, obviously, there's a lot of financial considerations that need to be. Uh, in play here and that we need to figure out, and perhaps this is something where we look at uh grants. Or something to help fund.
Yes.
Anyways, I, you know, I really appreciate the the effort that went into this, thank you.
Yeah, future, I says some uh numbers to look at, so. Um, okay, uh, and you, Nathan, you said the parking bit is shortish.
Yes.
Let's power through to, and then we'll do a break.
Okay, alright, so a quick update on kind of where we are on parking numbers. As just a quick reminder, in twenty-one, twenty-twenty-one, the first parking study was conducted, you know. Observation from that identified, you know, slightly more than fifty percent parking use, um. The parking study forecasted a future parking summertime demand based on the usage, and so. Within those assumptions, assume that a hundred percent of the buildings were occupied, allowed for some future growth, and that only eighty-five percent of the parking. Um, uh, provided was a available for use. Um, the parking study also talked about, and there's been some conversation about this tonight, that, you know. Improving the conditions for people walking and biking will hopefully encourage less people to drive that are local, and so there's a potential for some. Reduction in automobile trips from that parking study, five percent reduction in automobile truck. Or five percent reduction in parking stalls, it was about thirty-three stalls. Um, and and just a kind of reminder that, you know, there's no management of parking in the heights. And that could help balance supply and demand, so. Um, a quick table summarizing the current existing parking, a hundred and fifty-six stalls on twelfth and thirteenth today. A hundred and forty-eight stalls today on the east-west streets, four hundred and ten off-street on. Available for public use, but on private property for a total of seven hundred and fourteen stalls. The TSP um cuts the on-street parking, you know, down to seventy on the streets, uh, on twelfth and thirteenth by trading. Parking on one side for that buffered bike lane, and so you kind of have a total parking of six hundred and twenty-eight. Looking at the kind of hybrid kind of preferred design concept that we've been talking about tonight. And the kind of project team's recommendations based on this conversation. Now, eighty stall update, kind of eighty stalls on twelfth and thirteenth, so an increase from the proposed TSP. Um, a slight increase in east-west parking um between twelfth and thirteenth. There is a slight reduction here in the off-street parking, and this accounts for the, you know, potential loss of parking. And triangular parcel south of Belmont between twelfth and thirteenth. So six hundred and thirty-four total on and off-street parking stalls compared to, you know, an estimated six hundred and fifty-seven. Parking demand in twenty forty, and so, you know, that's within five percent of that demand. And so that's all I've got on parking.
Na- Nathan, the the hybrid estimates of parking, those would go down if we're getting rid of the. Um, angle parking on B and C and on twelfth street, right?
Yeah, and actually the the, um, so this assumed the one-way streets and parallel parking on both sides. Um, of the street and that only angle parking that was still shown on east-west streets was Taylor, and there was actually, I think it was one stall up. Um, there are some existing, and there's an existing encroachment um to that right-of-way that um doesn't allow a much of a gain. So yes, the numbers would come down a little bit, um, but by a handful.
Okay, thank you.
Estimate.
Uh, no, nothing, that was amazing.
Nope, great. Uh, enough of this, and thanks for playing with my directness and sometimes correctness. Tim?
Uh, just noting that. Um, the parking demand doesn't necessarily account for um increased people using the area with bikes. And accessing the area that way.
Gladys?
No, I mean, just continuing to work with our transportation partners, right, as. I recognize we're we're talking as a as as a board right now, but as a council, we have all supported the idea of. Supporting our local transportation partners to hopefully minimize the the need for, you know, driving in these areas, so really, um. Continuing those conversations.
True, uh, Chrissy?
Um, well, now that we're kind of heading down this more singular path of. This is sort of the plan with the one-way and then to, you know, kind of picked an option. I'm looking forward to hearing back from the business partners mostly. Um, to see how they're feeling about the parking, um, I like the fact that this hybrid design is better than the. Proposed TSP, and I just want to make sure that our community members and businesses are comfortable with. Um, with it, you know, lots of people from the valley drive down, and I just, I just want to make sure that that's. That's good, but I think that that, you know, obviously, this is a better direction than. What the last TS, proposed TSP said.
Uh, cool, I I just have one question, Nathan. I guess I have a statement that says we're gonna take a break until uh eight forty-four, seven minutes. eight forty-four, seven minutes.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, is, is is everyone, um, Tim is ready? Gladys, you ready? Chr- Christie, you ready? Okay.
Yeah.
They can jump in when we get there. So we're going to, we're, we finished the presentation. Thank you, Nathan. Um, and Dustin at all, uh, to my suggestion is that we talk about each of the, the big things and we which are sort of decision points, which is thirteenth and May Belmont, um, intersection and then the cross-sections. Um, and, uh, Grant has volunteered to write down any consensus things and turn them into a motion when, when when we get done with it. Paul?
I'll run up the flagpole.
I suggest we have a roundabout at May and a traffic light at Belmont.
Well, I agree with that.
Uh, it, it doesn't have to take a long time. What about, um, the, the Belmont, uh, the option with a no through traffic on Belmont?
The, the flavor, the flavor of light at Belmont is, let's see if we can get this far.
Okay, all right.
Roundabout.
Fair enough.
Everybody? Anybody got heartburn on that?
I'm happy with roundabout.
Ti- Tim, you good with that?
I support a roundabout as well.
And the, and the some light configuration. Okay, Tim's thumbs up and some light configuration at Belmont.
And some, and yes, light versus roundabout at Belmont. How are we feeling about that?
Okay, uh, Christie?
Um, a little bit hesitant on the roundabout on May thirteenth, but I can support it because I also agree. I think a light at Belmont is way better.
Right. Okay. Um, and then, you know, obviously we're, we were.
So staff suggested option, what, two for the Belmont light? And I, did I remember that right?
If we can call it by what it is, which was closing Belmont?
The, are you, are, it, they recommended the one with no through on Belmont between twelfth and thirteenth.
Yes, close Belmont is what they said.
And, and you're act suggest, like that the best as well, is that right?
Yeah, they, they, they were, that was their consensus, those, the same options that you were just recommending.
All right. So let's do thumbs up, thumbs down on, uh, closed traffic on Belmont with that light.
That's, yeah, that's option two for everyone playing along at home. Yeah, I have a few long-term concerns, but I mentioned those earlier. Yeah.
Uh, Paul? Megan?
Um, I, yeah, I guess I, I do want to acknowledge, I think all of the options have negatives. I, I know there's concerns about this one. It seems like it is the best of one of many compromises we're going to be making, given the limitations, um, of the heights in the right of way. Um, so I am I'm supportive of it.
Yeah, I mean, uh, I'm, I'm supportive of it in that there's no great answer. I, I think there, there definitely has to be consideration for those people east of twelve, how, how they're going to navigate through, how cyclists are going to navigate through what the considerations are for the, you know, the, the streets in between and getting across there. But yeah, I, I think, uh, and, and then furthermore, I mean, what that space can be in the center, just because I, I wasn't aware that you'd probably have to like have trucks going in there to access the alley. What does that look like? I, I, it's, you know, but I think I'm overall support, or overall supportive of the idea, just uh, some more work to just consider those.
Tim, since I see your face on the TV.
Yeah, I agree. I'm supportive of it. I think I would be interested in, uh, learning more about what would be done with that space, too. Um, I think there's, uh, some potential to make it uh, a nice space. Uh, and, you know, I don't see, personally, I don't see why bikes can't move through there as a route. I mean, that makes perfect sense to me, but so I guess the short answer is yes.
I'm imagining, you know, like one of these European streets that's pedestrian and bike ninety percent of the time. And then there's some hours in the morning where trucks can go through that kind of thing. So I, I don't know, is that?
Yeah, we, I mean,
We, we get to decide.
To get an intersection and option, we can continue to work on the details.
Yep, perfect, okay.
That, that allows us the latitude to, to move on from there, whether it's a wound earth, whether it's a driveway, whether it's a park, whether it's a
All right.
Alley.
Yep. Um, Gladys, are, are you hip to that?
Yeah, I'm here. Um, for some reason, my video is not working right now, but I'm here. Uh, support a traffic signal on Belmont and thirteenth. And then Tim had mentioned, you know, what do we do out of the placemaking? I, I know that staff is, is working to figure that piece out. I see like a farmer's market that's taking place. We have first Fridays that are downtown. It would be great to establish some, a first Friday or first Wednesday up on the heights and, you know, allow space for, for the public to explore all these, uh, businesses that we have up there.
Cool. Uh, Christie, are you hip to the no through on Belmont?
Um, well, I did talk to the mainly impacted business owner, and so that makes me feel better that um, they're okay with the closure. Um, I had not thought about the route for people to the, is it the east? That would need to have them maneuver to get up to Rosar's. And so I'm really concerned about that piece. Um, and so what I would hope is that if we agree to this, that that really gets scrutinized and identified and addressed.
Yep. Um, okay. And, and I, I too think that's the best option there. I, I, I agree with that, that we should ask the consultants to say, how, how, what's the expected delay to either go down thirteenth around the circle and back, or to go down to May and, and circle back? When, you know, further's hours where the traffic is heavy on thirteenth and, and a left turn. Much like many left turns are now in Hood River is just, uh, not really possible. So, I mean, it might, it's going to be, oh, it's four in the afternoon. I'm not taking that left, but at, at two in the afternoon or or seven thirty at night, the left is fine. So.
Or if it's convenient, right? Like, I will take my bicycle. Because less time, right?
Of course, we will all be taking our bikes and walking like, like Mr. Mark does anyway.
Right.
Uh, um, so it, it is, can I, can I see thumbs up just on the action item to define what the effective turn south is?
Thumbs up for me.
Okay, all right. I, I think, okay, so that's done. The next one is, uh, east-west streets. There's two possible configurations. Um, I, I, I sort of heard consensus that the one-ways were preferred. Let's do a round on that.
Uh, yeah, I'd prefer the one ways with the road hierarchy, as mentioned during our pre, uh, presentation. Um, I have a concern about the contra flow bike lanes.
All right, let's just do the one ways first, and you, you're hip to that? One way, one ways, one ways. Uh, Christie?
Mm-hmm.
Gladys?
Yes, I support.
Tim?
Yeah.
Okay, one ways. Uh, now let's talk about the, uh, east-west roads contra bike lane versus aligned with the, uh, with the sidewalk. I guess that's, those are the choices, right? Okay, cause, cause I, I did hear a bunch of people say, we're not really hip on, we're worried about the contra traffic. Okay.
Dustin, your, your mic's not on.
Yeah, I didn't hear any of what was just said. I still.
I'm, I'm, I'm.
Dustin, you're on.
Oh, excuse me. Uh, one way, one way is good. We would like to, uh, get some subject matter experts to weigh in regarding the curbing and doors of contra flows against that. So give us one way is plenty for us to work with.
Okay, sweet.
Okay, so and just in the, as you're looking at it, I do the, um, if emergency vehicles need, I, I guess that's a factor I want to make sure worth keeping in mind. Emer- emergency access.
Red, red, red.
Thank you.
Just leave it on.
That's the that's a part of the subject matter expert.
Got it, okay.
Bike head. Uh, we will also want our EMS folks and, uh, the ability to use a sixteen-foot lane rather than eleven is a meaningful metric that we want to evaluate.
Okay, thank you.
Um, I thought I heard consensus that for a ten-foot bike lane on twelfth, it the, the choice is staff recommendation, which is eight, and it's hard to wiggle stuff in here, but I heard a bunch of people talk about ten and try to ask them to figure out a way for, to make that happen.
Are we interested in reducing angled parking along twelfth in order to try to fit a ten-foot cycle track down twelfth?
I'd suggest we say we want a ten-foot cycle track and.
Prioritize, prioritize Dover parking.
Yes. That, that's, that's the question.
Yep.
Isn't, does so I guess to everyone, do we ask for a ten-foot bike path? Uh, possibly prioritized over parking on twelfth, on twelfth.
Can I, can I jump in real quick, Mark?
Yes, please, Tim.
Yeah, I think what, what I heard was is that if we change from angled parking to parallel parking, that there would be additional footage to a lot, to both the sidewalks and potentially the, uh, the, uh, the, the shared bike path.
But, I, I, yeah, I think that that's one, that's a way to do it and, and with a loss of like six parking spots is what I recall, but but, um, he, the, the suggestion that we're both, that we're thumbsing up being on is we prioritize the ten-foot and then they'll tell us how, what they can do with parking.
Can I jump in there? Is that, um, when you say prioritizing the bike over the parking is I'd rather prioritize the ability to have longer vehicles instead of ensuring, you know, if we did the angled parking, then we're limited to the vehicle length, whereas if we do parallel parking, it opens it up. So it's kind of a, it's a good marriage between we get the bigger bike pass and the larger vehicles are also able to park. It's a positive.
So, so I'm interpreting that to say, yes, ten-foot and, and here's some ideas for staff when they're figuring out parking.
Correct.
Um, Tim, you're good with that? I, I think from your comment.
Yeah, I guess, uh, I guess my only other thought is, is it doesn't need to be limited to ten. Given, given the reduction of the, from the angle to the parallel parking, and I don't know the answer to that question.
Um, I don't know.
Are, are you saying if it could be twelve, explore that?
Right. I mean, you know, I don't know how much footage we're gaining. So we can say ten, but
If I understand you correctly, Tim, you're saying if we change to parallel parking, how much space would be freed up to allocate to the cycle track and or sidewalks? Yeah?
Yeah, exactly. And there will be a play on, there will be a trade-off there.
Well, well.
And I think that'll be a really good conversation to have with fire and ambulance of what makes them more comfortable as well, balancing all of the modalities.
So for staff, is that pointed enough? It, it feels a little loose.
I think, I think what we have, uh, clearly is an indication that the six spaces that may be compromised out of parking is, is an acceptable trade-off to reallocate space to either increasing the size of the bike path, the cycle track and the sidewalks. I mean, I think that's, that's what we heard, that's what we've been hearing from, from various, I mean, I see one shaking head from various actors uh, and kind of steering committee. And so I think that's enough for us to go back.
That's sufficient.
That's sufficient.
So, uh, that's clearly the majority. I do, I want to just say, I'm like, I'm still feeling. So, uh, that's clearly the majority. I do, I want to just say, I'm like, I'm still feeling squishy over that, just to put that out there. I'm still squishy on the getting rid of the six parking spaces. Um, but I, but clearly the majority is there. So from Dustin's perspective, yes, he's got feedback. So.
But, uh, yeah, I think that this, this is nicely, um, a, a little bit vague and saying, we want wider than eight feet on the cycle track and tell us what you can do.
Just for the record, I too would welcome ten feet, but also open to ideas of, or exploring ideas of, you know, twelve feet or, or other options.
Yeah.
I, I think we're all talking about generally the same thing. We're aiming to generally minimize street width, still accommodate larger vehicles as need be in parallel parking spaces and maximize the cycle track and sidewalks. Does that concisely sum it up for everyone?
Yes.
And I think that's nice.
Enough direction for staff?
Bloody.
Okay. Um, I didn't, I mean, I think that the, between Pacific and, and, uh, Union. That was good. Is that time to go home? It's like, time to go to bed?
Let's go, let's go.
Uh, dude, is, is, I don't think there's a decision point for Union to Pacific. Um, I think, let's see the, are we coming up for narrowing the lanes and coming up with some bike plane? I, I don't see the lower path being a real option. I mean, there's a bridge that has to be built for crying out loud. Um.
Let, let's run that up real quick. I, I, I oppose the go down to the creek for the bikes.
I, I support staying up.
Yeah, let's, let's, let's do it in the positive. Does everyone support the, uh, finding the street level bike path, uh, between, between Pacific and the Heights? Okay, I have one. Uh, Tim's up, uh, Gladys?
Thumbs up for me.
Uh, Christie? Was that a yes?
Yes, sir.
Okay, sweet. I don't have anything else on my list. Thirteenth. What?
What's up for thirteen? What's the question?
Uh, did, did we have to do anything?
Uh, really, there were some small mods, uh, that had to do with, uh, one, the acknowledgement of limited right-of-way. Two, some aspirations to pursue additional right-of-way when we have redevelopment to accommodate the walks. Um, and just some small shift.
And.
Need any direction or decisions for that?
Uh, if you can come to the idea that we'd recommend a, or in alignment with a twelve-foot sidewalk rather than a nine and a half, where opportunity permitted.
Twelve-foot sidewalk versus nine and a half?
And that would be where opportunity was present. Some places we won't have redevelopment and we will not get that.
This is except for where Megan lives.
It will be, it will be nine and a half.
We got thumbs on that?
Yeah, definitely. I, 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 I would like to, uh, formally encourage the use of crossing islands and stuff for, uh, added uh, safety, but I think, I think you had that anyway. So.
Yeah, I think that was incorporated. There wasn't really a pivot point on that.
Yep, yep. Um.
Yeah, I think the idea of saying where opportunity is permitted is a great general encouragement.
Hey, we got nods. Um, and I don't have anything else on my list. So, um, do we wanna, we wanna do a quick, just what, what our thoughts are? I mean, that was sort of the rush through thing. Let's say lightning, lightning comments on just the overall plan. Um, I think Doug?
Yeah, I, I think the over, I'm in favor of the overall plan. I think a, a roundabout would be, be nice on both ends, but I definitely agree that it's cost prohibitive and, you know, too much of a disruption. Uh, I think it's a really good opportunity and being that it's flat for people to be able to cycle as long as we give them the opportunity to safely do so, to move through the area. Um, and yeah, I just, I applaud all the work that's been done on it. And I know it's a tremendous amount of work. There's a lot of hard decisions and, you know, all of that. But generally in favor of, of the concept, uh, with all the comments we've made tonight.
Megan?
Um, yeah, I, I wanna thank, um, Dustin and our consultants. This has been a lot of work. Um, I, I think all of this is really hard in that, I know I said this earlier tonight of just, we, we don't have the right of way to do everything we want to do. We, we can't actually meet all of our goals. All of them are gonna be these kind of messy compromises. And so I, um, I, I think what, what, what we're coming up to and what we're narrowing it on is, is gonna be a messy compromise and everyone's not gonna get everything they want. But I, it's, I think it will be a lot better than both existing conditions and the current TSP plan for the future. And so I'm hopeful that we are getting somewhere that will be better, if not perfect. And I appreciate everyone working on it.
Paul? Yeah, good work, Steph. Good work, us deciding.
Yeah. We've talked plenty.
Yeah. Uh, Tim?
Yeah, I'd like to thank staff and the consultants as well and for all their hard work. I think it is a, a plan, um, that points to the future. Um, and I would look forward to, uh, seeing it progress. Obviously, there's a lot of uh, other work that needs to be done with respect to how to pay for all this. Um, so that's kind of like the next thing in the, in the compasses. But I think it's, uh, I appreciate everybody's hard work.
Gladys?
Yeah, I too, uh, wanna thank staff and our consultants for all of their efforts in helping us create something for the future. What we currently have in place is a, there's safety risks all over. And as Megan said, we do have to compromise and we're not gonna get everything that we want, but I really do appreciate the time and effort and just seeing this all come to life is, is, um, awesome. So thanks.
Awesome. Uh, Christie?
Um, yeah, I just, I mean, I wanna echo, I'm eager now that, um, the board is getting more focused on a plan. Um, now I think it's a good time to get some additional community feedback to see how this will directly impact businesses and residents. Uh, and learn more from that. Um, and I also wanna say I'm thankful that, you know, as we focus on bike and ped, we also have to remember we do have elderly people that are not as mobile and we also have weather. And so, you know, it's a lot to take into consideration. And so we have to, we have to keep all the modalities available to everyone so that everyone can get around all times of the year. So that's a big, that's a big chunk to take in. So thank you for everyone.
Yep. Um, okay. And for me, you know, this is hard. This is generational. This is addressing a part of town that is, i- if it isn't broken now, it's gonna certainly be broken in the near term. So, so it isn't, it isn't something we, we could stick our head in the sand, but we're choosing the harder, um, use this thing and, and fix stuff for, um, for the next hundred years kind of thing. So, so good on us. Um, Christie, you talked about community stuff. These meetings are the path to get input. So we on the board should be talking it up. The city has been publicizing stuff, uh, get those people to come in and I have read the packets and, uh, and, and provide your comments, cuz, cuz there is a path for that. Uh, Grant, you were working on the mother of all motions.
Uh, in summary, what we talked about, we are supportive of the roundabout at thirteenth May. Uh, we're supportive of option two, closing Belmont at thirteenth Belmont. Uh, one ways up, uh, in between thirteenth and twelfth, respecting hierarchy, uh, through there. Um, on twelfth, we're looking at, uh, minimizing, um, the vehicles, lane sizes and switching over to parallel parking, that have enough space for vehicles as well as maxing the cycle areas and sidewalks in that space. Um, the multi-use path between Pacific and Union, uh, will be on top of the hill, not down below. Um, and on thirteenth sidewalks are good. We will take opportunities to max them out and make them as reasonably large as we can. That covered everything.
Well said. I second.
Alright, we have a first from Grant, a second from Paul. Uh, any last words before we kick this back to staff? Uh, all in favor, say yes.
Hi.
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 Tim and Gladys, I heard some eyes.
Yes.
Alright. Uh, and, and, uh, I, I vote yes as well. So, um, there, there you have it. Thank, thanks, everybody. That was, that was nice and short. Uh, it, I think that we will now adjourn the urban renewal agency.
Oh, just one more. Uh, we hope to be back to you in July.
July, okay. Uh, so and we'll, we'll close this meeting and on to Paul, who gets to run an entire city council.
Be in the city council at nine, ten. We have, uh, no presentations. We have the consent agenda. I would entertain a motion.
I would move approve the consent agenda.
I get.
Moved by Saunders, second by Paulson. Any discussion? All in favor?
I, I, yes.
Opposed? Chair votes high, motion passes. Oh, I would like to acknowledge, uh, uh, U R A Commissioner Chapman for hanging in there with us. Thanks for being with us, Christie. Uh, we have two action items. One is the CFA. Kevin is here tonight. Thank you for coming, Kevin, and hanging through there, all that.
Absolutely, whatever I can do. Uh, this looks great. Uh, my name is Kevin Greenwood. I'm the executive director at the Port of Hood River. I appreciate the opportunity to speak on the, uh, CFA. The commission formation agreement is in front of you tonight. Uh, this is a, an effort that's been almost five years in the making from when, uh, this effort really started full, uh, throated back in late twenty seventeen. So just want to give you a, uh, an opportunity to, let's see here. Should, uh,
Set you up.
Does that work? How did you do that?
I hit the little, um, wheel.
Hit the wheel.
The down arrows also.
Okay, that's perfect. Gotcha. I went left and right, not up and down. There we go. Okay, so I'll just touch on the legislation, which is the principal act for, uh, this new bridge authority. I'll, we'll touch on the CFA, talk about the adoption schedule and then next steps moving forward for the new bridge authority. So this actually, uh, really got, got steam in, uh, the legislative session in twenty-two, uh, when both Oregon and Washington legislatures almost unanimously passed legislation to allow for counties across a state line with a bridge that wasn't owned by a DOT to form a by-state bridge authority. And so Senate Bill fifty-five fifty-eight in Washington passed and Oregon House Bill forty-eighty-nine did as well, which allowed, uh, counties and, uh, uh, privately owned or, uh, locally government-owned, uh, bridges to move forward with the commission formation agreement. So the best way to think of the commission formation agreement is as the charter. It's the charter document for this new bridge authority. And so, uh, this is really the document that the new, uh, uh, Hood River White Salmon Bridge Authority will use as its guiding document. Any changes to this document, we'll need to go back to all six agencies for any significant changes. Uh, the CFA includes interim rules. So, uh, the purpose of the by-state working group was to allow, uh, the new bridge authority to hit the ground running and not have to develop a bunch of governing rules and, uh, bylaws and things of that nature. So those are included in this document. Uh, and then there's also a, a transitional plan. So the port has been taking on these responsibilities. And so there is a transition plan, uh, where the new bridge authority can work with the port during that transition. I anticipate that there will be, continue to be a close relationship administratively between the port and the bridge authority. But the purpose of that transition plan is to allow the new bridge authority to go in whatever direction it chooses to in the future. So the authority effective date is, uh, July one of this year. So, uh, assuming that everything's, that is scheduled this week transpires, July one will be the, uh, effective date. Uh, the principal place of business is in Oregon, uh, but offices, including the administrative uh, lead office could be in Washington, but it would still need to follow Oregon law. Um, so the new, uh, bridge authority will have the right to adjust tolls, uh, and, uh, toll policies. And they will also be responsible for all engineering, construction, finance, operation and maintenance of the new bridge. And as I noted, uh, any charter, any changes to that will take the action of all six entities. So, uh, in summary, the CFA, uh, has three appointed members, uh, from Clickatack County and three appointed members from Hood River. Uh, those are four-year terms. Uh, they are, they are staggered at the initial appointment. Uh, each county will, uh, develop their, uh, procedures and criteria for appointing, uh, directors and alternates. Uh, and there can be some slight differences between how, uh, Hood River and Clickatack County want to appoint their members. It, they just, it just needs to be consistent with the CFA, but they do have a lot of flexibility in determining how they want to do that. One of the things that we were waiting for was for the, uh, county commission reps to provide some guidance, uh, to the bridge authority on that nomination process. So that's included in there as exhibit D. So I'm just gonna zip down this, uh, adoption schedule. So the name was selected, the Hood River White Salmon Bridge Authority was selected January ninth. Uh, the principal place of business selection of Oregon was, uh, January twenty-third. Uh, the by-state working group approved the final CFA. We looked at four different, and, and your attorney and the attorneys of the six agencies looked at four different versions, uh, edits and re-edits. And so we got through four versions of that. It was finally approved for distribution February sixth. Uh, the Port of Hood River Commission approved the document February twenty-one. Uh, the city of Bingen, uh, April eighteenth, uh, White Salmon, the next day, tonight. Hopefully the city of Hood River will do so. And then I've got a little bit of a, uh, uh, switch there. Actually, uh, Clickatack County will be approving, uh, the document on the twenty-fifth. And then Hood River County will have a special meeting on Wednesday. And it's actually the April twenty-sixth is the agreement effective date. So there's the agreement effective date, and then there's the, uh, authority, uh, effective date, which was the Ju- July one. That interim period gives the counties the time to make the appointments. And then there will be a signing ceremony as well, May first, two P M. at the port, port boardroom. So once that's done, uh, the by-state working group will be disbanded. And so the by-state working group has really served as a policy advisory committee to the port commission. Uh, the, uh, new bridge authority will take over that role. And really, there won't be a need for the working group. I imagine that there will be a lot of crossover between both of those entities. Uh, as a, as an Oregon agency, this, this new bridge authority will need to require, follow public meeting, public record rules. It was interesting, the by-state working group, as it was set up, was made up of an equal number of Oregon and Washington members, which there was a little bit of a loophole as far as whether it really needed to follow public meeting, uh, rules. I think the working group intended always to do that, uh, but it will be more explicit once it's formed that it will be an Oregon agency and will need to follow state rules. Uh, the port will continue to provide administrative and financial services. Uh, right now, we've got, uh, we're working through about fifteen million dollars of, uh, grant funds that the port has, uh, has contracted for. So we'll continue to administer those, uh, contracts until that funding is exhausted or when the board, uh, bridge authority board decide, determines otherwise. Uh, there are some new funds. There's some exciting news this last week. Uh, I, you may have heard that, uh, the Washington legislature moved about fifteen million dollars of the seventy-five million forward. So theoretically, that money will become available in July. If the new bridge authority is up and running, it can receive the, that, those funds, not the port. And so there will be a real interesting, as we get down to the end of our fifteen million and they start piling up their money, there will be some, uh, transition, uh, that takes place there. And, and that's gonna be really interesting from a public administration perspective to, to work through that. Um, the, uh, port will continue to provide administrative services, but the one area where we cannot provide service is on legal counsel. And so, uh, the working group and, and the, uh, bridge authority will be making that selection. I believe there's been three or four names brought to the, uh, working group and, uh, I'm sure they'll be making a selection in due time. Uh, in Oregon budget law for a new entity, there is no required, uh, first year budget. Uh, but, uh, H and T B, the consultant team in the port is developing a de facto first year budget. And we're actually setting up a new fund, uh, And we're actually setting up a new fund to receive the new tolls when they become developed. And so that will act as the de facto first-year budget for the for the Bridge Authority. But I just want to thank, thank the city council and the last two mayors that have been actively engaged in this five-year process. And if you have any questions or comments, certainly entertain.
I'm imagining how you must be feeling, Kevin, having started as like the bridge project administrator and now being being as the port director. It's been it's been a your own different journey.
Well, it's been, I I think, as from a twenty-year public administration background, seeing the local governments from Clickatack County and Hood River County come together on a project like this, with all the history that's been there, has been really, really amazing. If you recall about three or four years ago, when the port first submitted the letter to join this group, they there were votes at all of those local governments, and they voted not to participate in this effort. So to see that change that's taking place, I think, is really, I think, as a public administrator, a source of pride, because our role is to facilitate differing opinions to come together for a common good. And so in a lot of ways, this is a real highlight. But again, it's the elected officials and the appointed officials that are making this happen, because it would be so easy for this to go sideways at any one point along the way. So it just goes to speak that the entire area wants to see this bridge replaced. And I think this is a great first step and a major step in in getting that done.
So, Grant, feel free to chime in. Been a lot of work at the B S W G, and we we've agreed with our other committee members that we're we're ready to to I I support us us signing the C F A.
Yeah, Sam, I just commend the Port Commission for your wise and judicious decision last week ago.
They've made a lot lately.
Times abstract. To to mirror all the scheduling and everything with legislation, I was already mirroring Washington's. It really I mean, why is called to effectuate that change and make this bridge a thing?
Yeah, so. Absolutely. I got a call from Senator Curtis King, who's a key legislator, and he kind of explained what the lay of the land was, especially from other legislators in Washington. And so that was the main precipitation for the update on the on the current bridge tolls. So that was new new information that the commission had that it hadn't had a month earlier. And so I think that really was a major, major change in the decision.
Right. As long as everyone's happy with that.
And you'll remind us all, our attorney, Dan, Hood River City Attorney, he's fine?
Yes, he debuted back in February, I think, January, February, and I there's not substantially changed since that time. So there is his appearance himself.
Dan, before we sign this thing, is there anything you want to know?
No, as the as a matter of law, it tracks the statute that the Oregon Legislature passed. And so that's in these things, that's the most you can hope for.
And Kevin, help me make this go well. I know at the signing ceremony, there's, I mean, whether I'm actually are we signing something tonight, or are we approving that we can sign on Monday? Do you know how that's going?
Our mission is to authorize the mayor to execute the agreement, whatever that looks like.
Whatever that hurt.
And whoever we need to put on the signature line is everybody will be giving us direction as to who ultimately to put on that.
Thank you.
I'm feeling a little behind the times, but we last meeting, there had been a conversation about kind of hitting a roadblock allocation of ongoing bridge tolls. Can you guys talk? Has that that's been resolved, or what? Where is that at?
Or we need a wise decision.
Can you be more specific?
Their their schedule on the port tolls is reduced. They reduced their schedule from five years to three years, which matched Washington's legislation schedule that they had in place and expectations.
Okay, and was the.
All timelines matched up in order to effectuate various funding sources.
Okay, and this is what all of the cities and counties had been requesting?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Then I have two questions. And this may be maybe more for for you, Paul, but I don't know, Kevin can answer it too. But, you know, so it talks about the county is going to have this process. They're going to consult with the city. Do you have any idea what that actually looks like?
Console with this regards to their appointments, you mean?
Yes.
I have no idea with this.
Okay, great. And then my other one, and it's possible I'm just not reading it well, but the the authority will be collecting tolls on the new bridge. But are they? Is is there an agreement where they're getting some portion of the existing tolls that are being collected for repair and replacement, or?
No, so.
Do they get some of that reserve? What does what does that look like? Where where do they get their revenue for the next however many years till the bridge is built?
Yeah, yeah, exactly. So right now, there's a there's a brand-new fund, and it's called the By-State Reserve Fund. And so if the by-state working group makes the final decision to the port to raise tolls this year, there was a resolution that was also passed that directed staff to start the process of a toll increase in a public process with that toll increase starting September one of this year. That new toll would go into this by-state reserve fund, which would then be the basis for a federal T F I loan, which would be about a hundred million dollar, give or take, loan to finish the finish the financing for the bridge. And we need about fifteen to twenty million dollars in reserves before we can activate that loan. So that's the main reason that this toll increase will be happening now. At the same time, we're actually tracking port staff that's actually working on the replacement effort. We've got finance, finance people and minute takers, and there's a certain amount of staff, less than one F T E. But we are tracking the time and the costs related to the port, and that will be reimbursed by the new Bridge Authority to the port for its time. So there is still some discussion about what that will look like. There is that inter- that transition document that I think was Exhibit C in the back of your agreement. And so the plan is is that ultimately, there will be an I G A between the new Bridge Authority, once it's established, and the port for whatever administrative services ultimately would need.
Okay, so there's a toll increase that goes to the authority. And I and I know there's work to just maintain the existing grid, but but can you none of none of the existing toll will go to the authority?
Right now.
That goes to replacements?
We've got, right now, we've got about ninety million dollars worth of repairs that need to be done. And if for some reason something were to happen with this bridge replacement effort, we need those funds for repairs. And so even after two thousand, two thousand twenty-six, the funds are going to continue to go into the repair fund and build up. We've got about two and a half, three million dollars worth of budgeted capital outlay repairs this coming fiscal year. So we're going to continue to fund the repair fund with current tolls. At the end, once the new bridge is up and running, the current bridge is removed. Whatever is left in that bridge repair fund would then be transferred over to the new Bridge Authority.
Okay.
No, thank you, Megan. That was very much what I was under.
But I'm not alone.
Glad you're tuned.
I think I would just second your your congratulations to Kevin for all of his efforts to work towards getting this off the ground. And I guess congratulations to all the participants.
Gladys?
Yeah, I too would echo. Congratulations to all to all of us. Kevin, thank you so much for all of your efforts to continue these efforts.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, good work. This is good. My understanding is we were letting the two counties lead, and then we were going to follow. But I think the way the the motion work is that's still true, right?
So we've gotten down to the point where it's just the particulars of the dates of meetings. We put it on the agenda in consultation with the council.
Yeah, I believe the county is holding a special meeting Wednesday this week, and this is the only item on the agenda.
So if we had waited, we would have did it.
No, that's cool. Yeah, thanks.
And any other discussion? I would entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the Commission Formation Agreement to form and charter the Hood River White Salmon Bridge Authority and authorize the mayor to execute on behalf of the city the agreement substantially in the form as shown in the attachment.
Moved by Paulson.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Your only eyes, any opposed? Chair votes high motion passes. Move.
Thank you. Appreciate it. I'll have. If you don't mind, I might just step out and go get something to eat. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Okay, lead service line inventory project. Great. Sorry about the idea.
It's okay.
So, yeah, I think this will be quick, relatively quick compared to everything else. So basically, E P A in twenty twenty-one has revised their letting copper rules to include lead service lines, which is all the private lines. So essentially, by October of twenty-four, you just have to have the inventory of it. So basically, a list, it's like a database, either Excel. This, what we're proposing, one-twenty Water has their own system. And basically, what it is, is they're going to go through all the tax slots. Properties built after nineteen eighty-five are assumed to not have lead service. Anything before eighty-five, they will it'll either be, it'll probably be labeled as unknown, because technically, they won't know if there's been, you know, any kind of upgrades to the property, or they replace the lines. And so that's all that's really required by October of twenty-four is just to have the list and have the bunch of unknowns or known lead service lines. I will say our staff, Adam in particular, has been here for like six hundred years, maybe just twenty. And he has never seen the lead service line in this city. So the hope is that we don't have a lot, but they still have to put the unknown in there. And so that's phase one. Once that's done, phase two is essentially taking those unknowns and finding out, like digging down or investigating a little more thoroughly to see if they are lead service lines or not. So. No, no, actually, phase two should be a lot cheaper, because we're hoping it's not going to be a lot, honestly. A lot of our town was built after eighty-five, believe it or not, even though large sections of like these old downtown parts. So, yeah, the thought is phase two will be less expensive.
Any questions?
Just real quick, the the budget talks about an annual subscription. Are we going to have to be paying this annually?
We're thinking three years we'll have to pay the subscription fee. So we're hoping we can get both phases squeezed into this first year, if it's relatively quick. And then we're thinking three years in case E P A changes any more rulings and things like that. Yeah, the subscription fee is relatively inexpensive, though I think it's like. Yeah, so I think at that point, it'll be a choice if we want to continue. Essentially, we'd be updating as construction happens or things like that. But honestly, once everything's done, there really wouldn't be a need for the subscription service.
Can we just move it into R G I S and update it?
So we could. Yeah, absolutely. Yeah.
Okay. Well, for right now, we're just approving one year and.
Correct. Yep.
Well, thank you.
The contract doesn't require a three-year?
No, it doesn't. No, no. I think that's right. And so I think John, so John Grim was heading this. And I think his thought was, yeah, it would be like a three-year that we would probably need it. Again, because this will take us through October of twenty-four, you know, yeah. At most, it would be three years.
David Glass, you're going to chime in if you've got something to say, right? Anybody else here on the floor?
I'm good.
Same.
I would entertain a motion.
I make a move that we authorize the city manager to award the project contract in the amount of thirteen thousand, three hundred and forty dollars to one-twentywater.com and approve an additional two thousand dollars in contingency plan.
I will second.
Second by opinion.
Ooh.
Any discussion? All in favor? Proposed? Every vote high motion passed.
Thank you.
All right, we have a discussion item, murals. Abigail.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. Excited. It's worth the wait, I promise. And I hope that Dan is going to join me in this conversation, because murals are one of those things that get cities sued sometimes. So Dan and I just wanted to lead you through such as the introduction to murals, the concept, and some of the things that we need to consider if we were to allow them here in the city. We currently have no code. So some folks might think that means anything goes. Others might think it is ruled by our sign code. So really, our recommendation to you is that we do something specific. So see if I can get this. Yeah, there we go. Think we all have seen murals in other cities. We have one or two murals here in town. I think they're really valued. But we as government have to be very careful about governing content. There are other pieces that we can regulate, but both the U S Constitution and the Oregon Constitution have very strong protections for free speech and that we cannot have a favor or disfavor of certain messages. However, we as government can impose reasonable time, place, and manner restrictions. So we've been looking at a couple of different codes, specifically the City of Portland Code has been litigated, so we feel fairly comfortable using their code as a model. Some examples of time and place restrictions, time could be saying you have to put them in the you know, if you install a mural, you can't just change it six months later, or you want to like have some kind of time commitment. Location, saying we're not going to allow it in residential areas. We're only going to allow it in commercial or light industrial areas. You know, that it still has to be design overlay zone requirements or historic requirements. Another example, like it could not extend past the reach of the building. Perhaps you could say it does not cover windows or doors. Some of these are a few of the options that you can have that are really content neutral, and they're about the time and the location. Other manner restrictions could be in the size of height. You could say it can only be so big. You could dictate size. You could say what materials it could be. It could only perhaps be paint or tile, or, you know, there's no fluorescent lights. There's no like no lighting of it, no electricity, whatever that might be, saying it can't cover vents. Those are some of the manner restrictions that you could have. Now, the more prescriptive you get, the more complicated things get. So really, we're just looking to you today to say, first, here's this topic. There's been a request from at least three different groups. So if you remember, I put this on as a other priority for you in your work plan for this year and next year. Just because we knew this was coming. And I think some of the groups are, they've been seeking grant funding, so they're not sure what their timeline is, but they are hopeful to start probably this late summer or fall. So feedback, you know, first reactions today, and we will come back to you with some much more specific pieces for for your input. But how specific or prescription do you think we should be? Are there any specific time, manner, place restrictions that you want us to investigate? And then is there any public engagement you think needs to be included? I'm not sure what public engagement would be, because we cannot you know, govern content. We're not asking people, um, do they like that mural, or what colors do they think should be used, or really, any public engagement would be just, do you think we should allow murals in our city or not? So but it is a very visible piece. We would definitely want to be transparent with the public that we were having this conversation. With that, I'm going to just turn to our city attorney and ask Dan if you have any other comments that I did not cover.
The the issue that really brings these kinds of regulations into court involve billboards. And so the battle in a lot of these cities has been to allow things that look like art while reining in or prohibiting things that look like commercial advertising. And when Abigail says it has to be content neutral, that means you can't make those kind of distinctions. And when Abigail says it has to be content neutral, that means you can't make tho- those kind of distinctions. And that's the nature of the case that Portland litigated, um, many years ago. When they tried to, when they first tried to regulate, um, wall signs or murals. Um, and so, uh, they came up after quite a while, came up with this set of regulations, uh, that Abigail described to you. And so that's what you're looking for is to try to avoid things that are like billboards. Um, cause as you know, those aren't allowed, uh, in the city and, um, that has worked pretty well for many years. And you would try to adopt something here if you're inclined to do so, that wouldn't reopen that problem.
Thank you, Jim. Question?
Um, well, I have another one, but I guess to Dan's thing of like time, place, and manner, is there a way to say we, or like, how do you not regulate speech, but disincentivize a billboard on the wall?
Uh, tough one. You can, um, do it by the size, dimension, uh, those sorts of things. The two-year minimum duration is an important one. Another one is, uh, in, in the size and dimension, uh, category. There are some very standard billboard text sizes, so you can dictate that it has to be something other than that. Um, so, and you, you've seen in Portland how it's worked. I think it's, it's, my observations work fairly well. I don't see a lot of wall signs, murals going up that are blatant commercial advertising. So I, you know, once they adopt these regulations, I don't, I can't recall if these were litigated. I don't think they were because they're pretty content neutral, um, but they seem to have worked okay. Um, so you have to get tricky to avoid standard billboards. But when you drive up and down the highway through the valley, you see what a standard billboard looks like in terms of its, um, size and dimension. So.
Okay, um, and then my other question, um, mostly was related to the reference to the Wilson Street Firehouse, city-owned building. Can we can regulate content on that?
Yes, I would think so, right? Dan, we own the building.
Yeah, it's your, it's your building. Um, the problem arises if you, uh, you know, entertain, you know, community groups and the kinds of things they want to put on your building, and you turn someone down. Uh, it's when you, it's sort of like allowing people to post your Facebook page, and then someone comes up with something that makes you, makes your skin crawl, you deny it. So that's when there will be the allegation that it was denied for an improper purpose. Improper reason. So that's the only caution I would give you about your buildings and how you are willing to have them painted.
Okay, well, then I guess based on that answer, that's an area that makes me uncomfortable. I mean, I don't wanna say kids can't paint it, but I don't wanna get into a place where a city-owned building is, you know, um, worst case scenario has a bunch of hate speech on it. That's not the city we're trying to build. Um, so if, if we can't regulate it really, that feels like a red flag.
Yeah, this is a good piece for us to research a bit more. I think the, um, and we have an IGA with the school district or, and I, it was signed by Steve Wheeler, so it is several years old. It is a very, um, brief IGA. It really probably needs some updating, uh, um, but this could be a piece that we could, we have rights to, you know, review and approve. I believe the, um, teacher Pete Wilson, Pete Lawson ha- has received a grant, uh, for mural. He already has an artist under contract, uh, so we have a conversation. I'm sure he'd be happy to come present to you if you wish to review what he's got or we can let him know, like, we're just not interested in this in our building.
I mean, I guess as the, again, like the individual thing right now doesn't feel like a problem.
Right. What precedent does it set?
That does concern me in the like, long term. I don't, yeah, anyway.
Yeah, thank you for highlighting that.
Uh, yeah, I thought I heard you say billboards are not allowed in the city. I hear you correct?
Right.
Well, we do have some. New balls. Okay, all right, thank you.
Mark. So blatantly discriminatory messages are still allowed under first first amendment protections?
What's that? What's that mean?
All right, so, uh, Megan's example of hate speech or, you know.
Right.
Do we, we really have no control over that? Is that right?
You can't regulate it on that basis that we, we, uh, disagree with the message, and so we're not going to allow it to be posted.
And, and there's no church-state separation stuff that can be enforced?
Right.
Like on ours, for example, you couldn't have.
And ours.
Biology.
I guess I don't understand the question.
Like if there was a religious depiction on a, if someone wanted a mural that met the time, manner, place restrictions, but had a religious message?
I can think of lots of examples.
Or political message.
Socially divisive, uh, that would fall on some line that's quite often talked about in the papers these days, so. Do you mean a church drug or painted church? No, I'm, I'm thinking, uh, uh, you know, anti somebody making a big anti-somebody wall somewhere.
It depends on how you draft your regulations.
Get to paint the reservoir. We gotta let somebody paint city hall, it kinda seems like to me. Oh, I. I think that if it's our buildings, we can pick which ones. I mean, you can't make someone have a painting, right?
Right, it, it, you have a lot more. You, you have a lot more control over what goes on your, uh, property.
So it's.
Your buildings.
The question she asked, we do want staff to look into this. Can you go back to that slide?
Sure. One second.
Thank you, Dan.
Yeah, I think today's question is just, um, it's on your work plan. We are looking to, uh, start this, but you know, to workflow, wanna acknowledge that. And did you have any specific direction as to the time, manner, place restrictions you want us to pursue?
I sometimes feel like I'm in the minority on this, but my opinion is like, I'm not like super pro mural. Like, I'm not wishing that we had twenty more murals. It's like, the visual clutter part of it is not my taste, but that's just me. So for number two, what do you, specific or prescriptive, you guys want her to be? Kind of looking to outlaw, kind of looking to rule them out or kind of looking to encourage that?
That's a good way to say it.
If the answer could be both, that'd be really helpful.
Well, you did mention that there's sort of this Portland, um, thirty feet, et cetera, et cetera. Based on, on that, I'm also thinking about staff time, whereas this, I don't like to research every mural in the country, right? Uh, um, I mean, do you feel that staff can do this adequately without sending a whole boatload of time on it? Or is there like a, you know, we look at Portland and be like, this looks pretty good, but it's not gonna take so long.
I think if you are interested, we would, I think Dan's recommendation, not to speak for you, Dan, would be to take the Portland code uh, and then examine that and have, and react to that, rather than us trying to write something from scratch.
Yeah, that's always the way to go with new regulations is you find a model that works for you, that's been vetted through the courts, and you steal it.
I love this field. It's all about plagiarism.
That makes sense to me.
All right, I'm very agree with.
What about, hold on, what about the Dells? I mean, the Dells has murals up on the wall.
We checked in with the city of the Dells and they do not have a code that regulates, um, murals in any way, in, in any significant way.
Yeah, cause I do share the same, uh, hesitations or concerns as others. You know, we don't want someone to paint a big F U.
Right.
On the building or any of our buildings for that matter, any sort of hate speech, any violence, uh, you know.
Yeah, yeah, that was a big surprise because they just had a big mural festival last summer, where they increased the number of murals they have, but they do not have a code regulating them.
I think if it was very specific, like the school districts could create murals, maybe the Columbia Center for Arts could build murals. You know, I, I would support something along those lines, but I don't know how restrictive or specific we can be.
Yeah, I don't know that we can regulate the creators of, or the initiators of a mural. Um, you know, the school district is the one requesting it at the fire, at the old fire station. And then Columbia Center for the Arts is one of the groups looking to do a mural on their building. The third one right now is the Elks. Um, you know, all, all groups that I'm sure will do a great job, but I don't know that we could just, we could regulate based on who wants to do the mural.
Well, I think if you come back and there's information that we can't do this, then at that point we decide, is this something that we wanna move forward with? But I, I think that there's sentiment that we also don't want to take up too much of your time in order to be able to research this.
Great. I'm gonna put it on Andy.
Yeah, it would just be a matter of, of researching, you know, uh, what other cities have done this. Uh, and, and I'd probably give a call to, uh, a city attorney over at Portland to kind of get their take on how it's worked. Uh, what issues, what difficulties have come up under their regulations? And if they could tweak it easily, what would they do? Those kinds of questions.
Tim, I see your hand.
Yeah, thanks, Paul. Uh, yeah, I guess I'm supportive of plagiarizing the Portland code. I'm not anti-mural in any way, shape, or form. Um, I think they can add value to certain places. I am hesitant to go down the, uh, regulating or even discussing what's offensive and not, what's not offensive to people, because I mean, obviously there's a lot of things that are offensive to a wide range of people. Um, so that's, that's a slippery slope for me. Um, but I can see the billboard, uh, issue. So I guess those are, those are my concerns with the, in general, the discussion. Uh, it's a, it's just, it's just a very, I mean, we're seeing it happen all over the place. You know, where people are, whether it's something in a book or something else, that people are deciding that they, they find that offensive. So I'm hoping that we don't go there too far.
What about the fourth bullet about public engagement in the process of creating our regulations? How you guys feel about that? My, my initial thought is no.
I mean, I, my general response is public engagement's good. To Abby Hill's point, I don't know what we would ask or how we would ask it to have it be used. I mean, like, I don't think a, a question that's useful is like, do you like murals or not? Um, so I, I, I'm, I'm struggling with what
Yeah.
would be a useful public engagement.
Well, yeah, I suppose, um, if we did not have any regulations, murals would still happen. They have happened, right? Um, so it was gonna be murals either way, so should we regulate what we can is really the question. I don't know if we need public input. Unless we're gonna get public input on what our proposal is, you know, thirty-five feet or twenty-five feet, you know, something that, that can. I don't know. I mean, that, if, if we can put it to that.
Tim?
I guess this is a question for Dan that I, that just came up, uh, came to me. What's the difference between graffiti and a mural?
Um, it, for those jurisdictions that regulate murals, um, they're allowed and graffiti is, would, if it's going to be put on a, a building has to comply with those regulations.
Thank you.
Permission of wall owner would be a first thing.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
Cause I, actually, I just heard a bit of this week, it was like ten pictures of graffiti in the city, like what happened to our nice little town? Not so, not so lovely.
Which, as we wrap up this conversation, be happy to, uh, call on Chief Holstein, if he's still online and, uh, our public works director, I must ask them both if they could talk about graffiti at the end of the meeting if time allows. So, uh, but I wanted to, if I may, just a moment of, uh, you know, public engagement is, you know, is always a spectrum, right? And one part is just informing people and, and the other extreme is like allowing folks to, you know, collaborate and decide. So this feels like it's more on the informing side, like, oh, the city is considering murals, uh, you know, do you have any, uh, questions or thoughts about what that process might look like as opposed to like, hey, community, what do you think about mirrors?
I have my hand raised, I'm just gonna take myself off mute. I wonder if the city of Portland did any sort of public engagement. I too do not oppose public engagement overall, right? We want our public to be engaging with us around some of these decisions that we are making. Um, so I'm, I'm curious to see what others have done around public engagement and if they were very specific on what it was that they wanted the public to say yes or no to. Um, and then I also just wanna make a comment around graffiti overall. Some may see it as, I'm certain that there's comments that are gonna be made around that, so I just want us all to be focused on remaining neutral. Uh, it is a form of art depending on what is on there, so, um, just to keep that in mind.
Yeah, good point, guys. Non-tentative on that as well.
I think I, I can probably answer the question of the city of Portland's engagement and a couple other cities in that, um, specifically about their time, place, uh, manner regulations. I don't think they did a lot of engagement. However, most, many of the cities that have mural programs also have grant programs, right? Where people can apply for funding for murals, and they've done a lot of outreach with that. So city of Portland, you know, has outsourced that piece to the Regional Arts Council. There's a, it's R A C C. I don't remember what the other C C stands for, um, Culture in Council or something. Uh, so they do a lot of outreach on that, but it is like to actually get mural applications, to solicit building owners who want to host murals. Um, you know, which is very different than what we're talking about right now, which is simply regulating murals.
So, I, I, I've been to cities around the world and I love some of the giant murals that I see. I'm, I'm scared of divisive stuff, like, like some of the other people here. I, what you just said makes me actually interested, which is can the mural regulation say under the Big Art Association of the River, um, murals can be done, blah, 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 blah. So, it, can we, th- that would not make it be wide open?
I mean, doesn't that get back to before, if we can't really regulate who's making the mural?
I don't know. Is, is that a way to, to not, not regulate and say yes, no on a particular thing, but to trust a, uh, community group, the, to, to vet things? Dan?
I don't know. And a number of cities have like art commissions who do a piece of that, but it's usually the city has money in the pot, right? You are helping to pay for the mural.
Yeah, I'd be a little reluctant to have some vetting of the mural since that, I think that, that sounds kind of content-based to me.
Like the murals, all murals must be done through this nonprofit, blah, blah, blah.
Hmm.
I think this topic could take as much time as we wanted to. I'm kind of ready to be done with this topic for tonight.
You don't know?
Go plagiarize Portland and come back with some info, right?
Great, yep. And I've got a list of, uh, questions that we can, uh, try to, try to address, so, thank you. Uh, first amendment issues are always super fun, so thanks for indulging us tonight.
Everybody okay with that?
Yes.
Uh, moving on, uh, city recorder, you got anything, Jen? Abigail, what do you got?
I apologize, I have a long list. Uh, mostly it's dates.
I trust you, it's okay.
It's just, uh, let's see, tomorrow is the, uh, or the ODOT meeting. They're having a, from three to four at the fire station is, uh, staff meeting with ODOT, but then they have a public open house at four thirty. Uh, and this is about the MSTIP project list, so the next, um, couple of years of funding opportunities. Councilor Poulsen might be able to speak more about that, but, um, that's great. Um, we have budget meetings coming up this Wednesday at, um, four thirty. Pick up your budget. Actually, yours are in the, in your boxes, but an orientation, just very quick, how this will work. And then the next three Wednesdays, I look forward to seeing you at six P M on the third, the tenth, and the seventeenth of May. Super excited. Budget time is always the best. Um, Wasco County is hosting a training for elected officials, uh, very similar to the LOC training that, uh, councillors, as Zan Miller and Stapina and I attended earlier this year, um, but so it's, uh, that's May thirty-first at five thirty P M. It's free, but we need RSVP. Jen sent you an email about that earlier today.
Um, League of Oregon Cities is holding a fundamental, the fundamentals of urban renewal training. You probably all can teach a master class on it by this point, but if you are interested, uh, that is May fourth. Uh, and Jen can register you for that. That one's on Zoom. Um, and then on May twenty-third at six P M is when we're going to have our West Side Urban Renewal, uh, virtual open house. So, um, Elaine Howard will be doing a show on what is urban renewal? How does it work? And then we'll be reviewing our project list, uh, and getting feedback on that, which will bring you that feedback later.
What day of the week?
Tuesday.
Is that, you said six P M?
Yes.
Twenty-third.
Yep.
Thank you.
May twenty-third. Uh, I've sent you a note today. Please take a look. The Parks District at their meeting last week had a conversation about Jackson, uh, the Jackson Park campus. Um, so please take a look at that. And then when Mayor and I meet this week, we'll talk about, um, what, uh, piece of conversation you'd like to have and how you'd like to approach this piece. So, and then we've talked about graffiti and then, um, and if you want to have any conversation today about the softball you request that you got.
Yeah, let's spend a few minutes on that.
Okay.
I, I changed my opinion actually during that presentation. I was like, hey, the six grand. But then I thought, wow, community thing. They say it's diverse, like they're using our parks. That's cool. So now I'm a little bit more in the middle.
I just wanted to explain the reason they are coming to you, uh, la- last, the last two years, they paid a thousand dollars. Uh, Mark Janik, our previous, uh, Public Works Director had issued that rate. Um, and last year I said, well, I'll honor that rate because it was kind of last minute. Uh, but I said, going forward, you will pay what's in the fee schedule, um, because that's set by council. So them asking for a break on that needs to come from council. And, and so anyway, that's why they are before you with that question. Uh, their other question about the banner, um, I have, you know, and I may be wrong, but, uh, the sign code allows for two banners in an open space or recreational area. I've decided that the banner above Jackson Park comes as one. So I've offered the softball league, uh, one banner, uh, not to exceed twenty-four feet, less than ninety days. Not more than six feet in height. I just, I just tried to apply the sign code to this. That's our property. You can choose to do something different, but that is, that's the direction I gave them. And that's, um, again, why they have come to you with these questions. Staff have been working with them for a while on these things.
So I'd be in favor of like, when you buy a ten punch pass, you get, you know, like some bulk rate, they're buying a lot of nights. I'd give them some free. Anybody have any thoughts on that?
I mean, I, it's a very big jump, so I understand they don't love it. I was impressed with the number of people, but I did the math and you're like, three hundred people, six, sixty-seven hundred dollars. That, you know, that's twenty-two dollars for an entire season's worth of softball games per person, which, you know, yes, adds to their price. I understand that they want to keep that low, but I, you know, it doesn't feel super unreasonable. Um, but I could see maybe you do a step up for one year and then we get to actual fee schedule the next year, just to not shock them. Um, banner one, I just, can I, I mean, I support it. I want there to be community things. It feels really weird to say a private group can advertise things in our public park. It just feels like a weird place to put the city.
I wonder if they've had any sort of conversations with Parks and Rec, right? Like, so Parks and Rec is
Sorry, I missed the start. Gladys, can you start over?
Can you, can you all hear me now?
Yes.
Yeah? No? Okay. Um, I wonder if they've had any discussions with Parks and Rec, right? So Parks and Rec helps with the Little League and the soccer and, you know, all these other additional activities that are taking place in town. And I wonder if there's any sort of, could Parks and Rec take that piece on? Just echoing the sentiment of if we're going to make an exception for a private group, even though they're doing incredible things in our community and keeping folks engaged. I live nearby. I can hear, you know, those balls being slammed out of the park and whatnot. Um, so I wonder if they've had any sort of conversation with Parks and Rec.
I can address that. Uh, yes, they've, I think, had multiple conversations with Mark Hickok, the Executive Director of the Parks District. Um, the Parks District's fields are at, um, Golden Eagle Park, which is, uh, high school property. Uh, so there's no drinking allowed there. And I think the softball league has decided they wanted to stay at Collins Field.
Let city residents play for free.
Mark, so, uh, given that the, the field rental is a third of their, um, just player revenue before, before sponsor revenue, that doesn't seem as compelling. Um, I, I'd, I'd be interested in some transition to a fee schedule kind of thing. Uh, or, uh, if you do it every Wednesday for the whole season, there's a, we, we build something into the next fee schedule that, that accounts for that. I, I mean, you want the baseball field to be used and so, and that's, that's using it. Um, it, it seems to me that local sponsorship of, of ball fields, you know, and I bet Babe Ruth would want the same thing, which is, is, you know, to get Betties to make a banner and so-and-so to make a banner. And the inside of a outfield wall just feels like someplace where in America, that's where the sponsors put the, put their little signs. I, I, I don't, I, I don't want to make, invent something new, but that doesn't feel like, it feels normal instead of special.
But shouldn't that money on the inside of our outfield wall go to us?
I guess that's like, if Betty sponsored, oh, we're going to redo the, and I don't know baseball terms, the infield. And like re-sod it or whatever, like, yeah, sponsor that. And I mean, because that's the children's park because everyone's name on it because they paid for our park, but they're paying for
I'm just thinking
not our park.
Little League baseball is all about sponsorship and the, I don't think, know if the city gets it. Um.
Well, I, I think back to Little League too, and I, I just playing devil's advocate here. I, I don't remember a lot of advertisements.
Isn't the, if you go to the Catholic, the fields at the, you know, aren't there signs just all over that?
And who do you think got that money?
The Catholic.
The league, the, the Catholics got that money.
Oh, did they? I, I don't, I don't know. I
No, Jen. Little League gets it. The, the church says, you can, you can put it up and thank you. That's a helpful clarification. I like Abigail's one banner compromise. That seems like fine.
And then, uh, it's just to carry it further, are we going to discount all field rental for all groups?
Big bulk purchase is what motivates me. Like if they're buying that many nights.
It's a quantity thing.
Yeah.
It's a cost Costco thing.
Ogo thing.
I mean, the opposite of that, though, is quantity in a park usage is more repair.
They're u- hard use.
Like, I mean, I, I agree in that we want people using our parks because otherwise why do we have them? But
Good point.
Bulk, bulk, bulk usages.
What kind of usage is this, Rich? Do you like or hate this?
Is our fee schedule accurate?
Should we be checking? Uh, I think the fee schedule, I don't know if it took into account sixty nights or whatever. I think, I mean, there's light costs, right? They're running the fields, lights at night. I mean, cleaning, you know, upkeep, things like that. I mean, there are recurring costs.
You guys have to go out there more.
Yes. Yes.
And it sounded like the, they play till ten and the bathrooms close at nine.
So, yeah, they're, well, yeah.
Yeah, there have been some issues with the softball league in the past. I really commend Rich and, uh, Mikel and Adam at Public Works who've been working with them on, you know, really formalizing an agreement. Sounds like, also you heard from them, there's, the softball league is also trying to professionalize, right? They have a board now.
Correct.
So we're very hopeful that, uh, some of the behavior issues we've seen in the past will be addressed.
Yeah, there was some previous, uh, yeah, it was, I don't know if management was the greatest. So sometimes the light would be left on at night and we'd get complaints or cleaning crew issues. So, yeah. Uh, the hope is that with this new board with them, that it'll be.
Yeah, to, let's say a little expand, like, like, to exaggerate a little bit, we don't need to host their frat party.
Correct. And it, it, well, yeah, correct. It was spirited. Let's just say that from what I hear.
I'm, I'm going to get a little baseball up here. Um, uh, so they have ninety-foot infields, right? And I remember talking about this with Abigail. Who can viable use that? I mean, I, I know we have a park there and everything, but Little League can't be played there. A lot of sports can't be played there because we built an adults on the baseball field.
It's the wrong size.
It's the wrong size to be inclusive. Um, so I'm just wondering to Grant's point, is there anybody else trying to use the field?
Babe Ruth and, and, uh,
Yeah.
high school kids. I mean, that's their field in Hood River.
Yeah, they want to speak on the board, but I think some of the members are involved in that league as well. And I think, and again, Mikel and others had run this, but I think they were going to give precedence to the Little League when they came. But you're right. I don't know if they can fully use that field. So I don't know how that works.
No, I, I think Mark's right though. I think Babe Ruth could go to ninety.
I mean, you look at the guys that built that field. It was for, it was for Babe Ruth, right?
Yeah.
Um, so I, when, when they said, we want to take the grass out of the infield, I was going, I didn't. If, if the Babe Ruth guys, I mean, maybe they can play either way and that's fine, but, um.
This was a slight other question from their presentation where they talked about they are going to do a bunch of work to the field. Is that with city conversation and approval or are they just doing work on our park?
They sent us a proposal. I don't know if we fully reviewed it.
Okay, but they're not changing anything without city.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, absolutely.
Just want to confirm.
In fact, I think, yeah, I think that was part of the languages. Yes.
I had a conversation with Mark Hickok from the Parks District about the type of sand you use in a, you know, that we really want, perhaps Mr. Hickok to help us vet a proposal like that because since, uh, parks are a lot more complicated and exacting than, you know, just providing some free labor and free, uh, materials.
Yeah.
I just wanted to ask Mark, so you understood that as they want to get rid of the, all of the field?
No, just the grass on the infield.
Oh, in the infield. Yeah.
That's what I heard. That was what I understood. And which is, you know, I, back in the day, I played co-ed.
I did write down removing sod on infield.
I, I thought like that meant like replacing it with grass, just because, yeah, Babe Ruth, you would need grass there, right?
Yeah, I, I had their proposal here that they just says, yeah, we would like to propose the removal of all grass sod in the infield.
I think Babe Ruth wins.
Well, if you want it to be more inclusive, you need that grass there, I think.
Well, it says, uh, discuss the removal of the infield side with other organizations that use or would like to use the field and have determined that doing so would create a field that provides continuity with other fields in the community.
I feel like there's some mutiny at foot here.
I mean, all of these things together.
Yeah, totally. Yeah, exactly.
Well, so I, I, not just completely, um, I guess some concerns there. I hope staff will be ensuring we're being as inclusive and possible with that field, um, for the decisions of tonight. I'm, I'm feeling like twenty-five dollars per person might be fine, actually.
So somebody make a proposal on the price.
I, I guess, I, um, I appreciate the work they're doing and I think we have a fee schedule for a reason and I'm fine with following it.
So we got, we got a motion for full, full rate, regular retail rate. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Tim.
I don't think we need a motion to vet the status quo with what we normally have.
We're making a decision. So do folks agree with the suggestion?
I, I agree. A possible hint at a fee schedule discussion next time we do fee schedule.
Gladys, you all right?
Yeah.
All right, we're holding the line on the price. And don't let them bully you on the sod and every other thing.
Thank you for that direction. Uh, we'll communicate back to them.
Awesome. Thanks, everybody.
Do you have any comments on the sign question?
Counsel call. I, we, we've addressed Joe, we've addressed Megan, we've addressed Brian. Claudia's come to the meeting twice. I think it would be awesome if we could at least address that we've heard her and that staff will continue to work with her and other developers to figure out what does, you know, West Side look like? I think we should at least give some sort of response and acknowledge that we've heard what she has stated.
Thank you, Gladys.
Agreed.
Uh, are you talking about Ms. Von Floto?
You talking about Claudia or Megan?
Claudia Von Floto. So Megan Rain, I, I wrote down everyone that gave public testimony today. And I feel like we've addressed everybody that, that came to the meeting today to talk to us. Uh, I, I would like to give us some, to give Claudia some sort of response that we've heard what she has said. Staff will continue to work with, you know, her and other developers as we look to formalize West Side.
And the, and the public open house on this is on?
May twenty-third.
Yep.
Yep. And I met, uh, with Claudia at length, um, Thursday last week.
I, I, and I hear that we're going to have, um, a virtual meeting that's coming up. But in all reality, folks, we know that very few people are going to show up for that, right? So that, I think we also need to be realistic that those who may be impacted that live in that area are not going to be at that meeting because it is a virtual meeting. It's at six P M. The only way to engage is through internet. We recognize that there's barriers around that. So I think it's just being realistic around some of the challenges that we have set in place. I recognize we have a time to meet and discuss it, but not everyone has the availability to be there.
Doesn't surprise me that the developers want us to pay for more stuff.
It doesn't surprise me either, but at the same time, we have to think about the future, right? And that we, there's going to be growth within Hood River. We can't say, no, there's never going to be any growth. We've done, we've worked with developers and whatnot for the middle housing code. And I think this is another opportunity to collaborate and see what can we do? How do we help each other out? Because we want housing, we want affordable housing. And if a developer is coming by to say, we can do it, but we need this, we should at least talk and explore what those options look like.
Dustin, she referred to Mr. Cody. Have you had any further discussions?
I'm in public session.
Yep. Thank you.
And I'd just say, Counselor Vera, you and I haven't had a chance to meet lately. I think we can talk more about, um, about your concerns and thoughts. I'm, I might have more information to share with you.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Okay. So City Manager Comments is where we actually still are.
I have finished my comments, although I'm not sure I, did I hear consensus that the one sign I've offered to the softball league is sufficient? Or did you want to allow them to have more banners?
Sixty-nine, you get a sign.
Yes.
Sign, correct. And then on the sixty-first day, you get down on the sixty-second day, you put it back out. Is that how it works?
Do we need to change or address our sign code in order to accommodate that?
This is a long conversation. It's kind of like murals. I think for now, city rules.
Okay. Thank you for that.
I think this will
End of City Manager Report.
All right. Good. Committee reports. Doug?
Uh, no committee meetings since, uh, I'm, I met with Katie earlier for Visit Hood River and, uh, I'm sure she wants to talk to you too soon, Mark, but, uh, been added and we'll start engaging with them. And, uh, she gave a really good history of where everything's been and where everything's at and, uh, looking forward to engaging with them.
Thank you. Megan?
Um, I don't know if this is committee or council, but, um, the D L C D Advisory Committee that I had said I would, um, apply for, they have gotten back to me and I was not selected. Um, but it sounds like there is a Hood River County Commissioner that they're recommending forward, but I don't know which one yet. And they did have a lot of compliments for Dustin and our planning staff though, so I do want to publicly say state recognition there. Thank you.
Congratulations, Dustin. Uh, market council, no committee, excuse, no committees. Right? Committee?
We signed the, Gary designed the thing. That was the committee. That was, that was the big committee thing.
Tim, committee?
Nothing for me there.
Gladys, committee?
Uh, no committee meetings. Congratulations, Dustin.
No committee for me. Mayor comments, I'm going to observe municipal court tomorrow morning. We're going to conduct a, uh, eval of our judge and I will ask for everyone's input. But honestly, if like, hard to have input if you'd like, never seen him do anything. So I'm going to go observe so that I will have some input to give.
Yeah.
And anybody wants to come? It's every Tuesday morning.
You have to speed before that?
I don't know. I'll, I'll report back.
Go Zags. He's a, he's a Gonzaga one.
Okay, I'll tell them.
Yep.
Uh, that's my only comment. Uh, counsel, let's start with Gladys.
Uh, no comments from me. Thank you all. I think this might be one of the longest meetings we've been in. So go all of you. Congratulations.
Tim?
Um, I guess I just want to briefly acknowledge that I attended the service of the person that lost her life on the bridge this weekend. Sad affair. But I do want to say his name just for posterity. His name was Riverheart Vanderklut and he'll be missed.
Hmm. Thanks, Tim. Anything else?
I'm here.
Doug?
Nothing for me.
Megan?
Nothing.
Uh, I went to the Parks District, opened the piece of Indian Creek Trail that goes from sort of the northeast corner of, uh, Seavercraft, where the Seavercroft, where the the that trail had ended before and it and it goes all the way up towards Elliot Drive. Um, the city was a partner in that and along with Columbia Land Trust, who took the donation of the steep hill from the landowners. Um, I I think it's the kind of, there must have been a hundred and twenty people there. It was pretty exciting. Um, it was it was good and it's the kind of partnership that that uh. Means that the little towns work better. So I I was happy with that. Um, and then the other thing, uh, just quick mention that I'm gone from the second of May until the seventeenth of May. So I will miss both two budget meetings and um, and one city council meeting. Uh, I my question to you guys is, do we do we need snacks the first budget meeting?
Yes.
I will. I mean, the one this week, do we need snacks this week? Because because of the two that I'm gonna miss.
Not for the half hour one.
So the two that I'm gonna miss, I already got plans. So so they will show up. Uh, but but uh, okay. That's it.
All right, Grant?
These are the important questions we need answers to. Uh, I'm going to be gone um, this Wednesday for the budget meeting, so find another chair, guys.
Wow, that's a way to get out of.
Yeah, bye. Bye, guys. Um, yeah. Um, but I got the budgets. I'll take it with me. Yay. Um. The go if you can go the ODOT meeting tomorrow. There's various grants and things at the state level. Uh, for transportation projects, including and not limited to. Bike routes, multi-use paths through areas, all kinds of stuff. Um, a lot of the stuff we're working on in the Heights Streetscape Plan or other things around town might be good fits for state grant funds. Um, so the folks there might be a great connect to. Find out about those grants and opportunities. Uh, what else? There was something else that's not important. So, yeah.
Anything else for the good of the order? Respect the fifth hour of the meeting. All right, you guys, good night.
Good night.
Thanks, Dan. Thanks, Rich. Thanks, Jen.